He'll join us shortly, but so meeting have come to order. The meeting is being telecast and recorded via Zoom to be placed for the public due to the COVID-19 and under the executive order signed by the governor. That covers it, right, Mallory?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. First item is to approval of minutes. CJ, you sent some out the other day, right?
Yes, two minutes from April 14th and December 4th.
What was the dates again?
Last meeting, April 14th. And our meeting before on December 4th.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes as submitted by the clerk for December? What was that December what?
Fourth.
Fourth?
Yep.
2019.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
On discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, all is opposed, the eyes have it. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of April 14th, 2020?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
On discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, all is opposed, the eyes have it. Correspondence? I don't have any. I haven't been to town hall looking the folder either, so I don't know if there's any, were there any additional transfer requests?
No more transfers. You have a beacon. You have, I think, accounting had provided you some printout, so that's in there. Nothing earth shattering.
Okay. Old business? I don't have any at this time. New business? To discuss the proposed FY21 budget discussion? We have the schedule as submitted. Hey, Peter. We will, I did not hear from anyone who said they weren't going to be able to join us tonight, so I'm expecting based on the schedule that we will be meeting with each of the people that are listed for tonight. No one sent any requests to make any changes? Mallory, you didn't see any from any of the department heads, right? For tonight or going forward?
Well, going forward, I had left you a note on the first page of the Google document. The elected official, the treasurer, the clerk, and the principal assessor have amended their salary requests to be more in line with what the selectmen had issued for department heads, so that note is there. And I did adjust those salaries with some notes on the side margin. So any changes I've made since original?
I was just talking about the schedule. Did anyone?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, no.
Yeah, okay. I was just talking about the schedule. I haven't even gotten into the budget.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure that the schedule is complete, so you know, the, on the schedule, did we hear from Bristol Plymouth that they're going to join us next week?
I did not hear from Bristol Plymouth, but I heard from DR and BP, Bristol Aggie, that they are both attending.
Okay, could we, could you have Karen follow up with them? Because our number has gone up significantly. It'll be somewhat important to actually talk to them this year live. Any, any question, any questions on the schedule? From anyone? Everybody's good with that? All right, so I guess, so now Mallory, if you want to just briefly talk about those changes that you were just talking about, and then we'll get into the individual budgets after that.
Let me know if you need me to share the screen and put the document up, if that's helpful for everybody, I can do that.
Does everyone have access to the Google Doc while we're on this? Or do you want Mallory to put it on the screen?
I'm on it.
Everyone has it, okay, great. So that front tab is my messages to you, and I've updated them with dates because the selectmen have taken some quick action over the last couple of weeks. So as indicated there, the elected officials, the clerk, the treasurer collector, and the principal assessor has, have changed their budget request. And then with some finalizations of the contracts for the police chiefs and myself, those changes have been instituted in those respective department, budget, departmental budget. We did notice just before we signed on that there's an issue that the percentages are in the percentage column, they're listed as dollar amounts, they should be percentages. The individual budget separated out on the bottom tabs are correct. We have to just fix that column, and we're trying to work on Chris getting access to that right now, for whatever reason, it's not working. So that will be changed before your next, your next meeting.
So, so I have, to that, to that point, and I, in reading your notes, and this is more of a question to the selectmen. With the elected officials changing their requests as they originally requested, and I see the note that they did it based on the current economic condition, what, in the overall picture, what has the selectmen decided? I know you have some contractually obligated, but overall, in general, with the raises that you guys are responsible for? Has that discussion taken place on ones that are over and above two or three or wherever they are? Because I did see some in there that were like three and a half percent. Did you guys, and I'm not, I don't want to get into individual ones, we'll get through that when we get in the budget, but I just want, in a general context, what is the selectmen's feeling regarding that situation?
So I thought, and correct me if I'm wrong, Selectman Pacheco and Selectman Goulart, but we, I don't know exactly which ones you're talking about, Mr. Chairman, Ed, but we, no one was over 2%. We didn't make any decisions for anyone to be over 2%, so everyone was either 2% or under, right?
I just have a question for Mallory. Mallory, do any of the collective bargaining agreements for FY21 have more than a 2% increase? Because that's what we were following, that's what Brett is alluding to.
So.
There was one, actually.
There are two.
I thought you were only talking about personnel, like department heads, I'm sorry.
Collective bargaining.
Yeah, and that's what I'm, and that's what I'm asking this question about. The board of selectmen voted 2%, and I just want to make sure that we don't get into a situation that a department head says, but I'm supposed to get what my union gets, you know? So Mallory, are the union contracts at 2% this year? Because some had varying rates.
Right, so the police union, it's third year, you know, it ends in this upcoming fiscal year, so they're at 3% increase. The highway department is, I believe, at two and a half. And the clerical and fire is at two, and the clerical and the 901 operators have not been reached, we haven't even started yet, actually. So it's just the highway and the police. And then all of the non-union department heads were rated on an evaluation scale. The threshold was 80%, above 80 got a 2% increase, below 80 got a 1% increase. And then, as I indicated, the three elected full timers, they followed suit with the 2%.
Thank you.
Was that your question, Mr. Chairman?
Kind of sorta. It kind of was, I get the contractual ones, and we're obligated to that, but, and I saw what, what these department heads did based on, because I know the economic discussion, we only have the facts that we have in front of us today, and things are going to be changing, and we all know that, and we have to factor that in. But I, I just want to know, as we get through this, I'm sure there's going to be questions of why are there three and a half percent raises? Why are there over two and a half percent raises? Just that, has that discussion to, if we have to start cutting, has that discussion to have that hard conversation that, hey, everybody's going to suck it up? We can't do anything about the contractual ones, but in personnel matters, where, where's that line going to be? Is it going to be, we'll leave three and a half percent raises in, but we may have to cut a position over here?
I might be wrong, but I don't think there is a contractual obligation out there that, that will result in someone getting over a 2% raise for the next fiscal year. I could be wrong, I would default to the town administrator on that.
That's what I'm trying to keep separate, Ed. When you said contractual obligations, I used.
No, 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 I was separating that. I was talking about the personnel decisions that are made in-house to get on raises, such as, these department heads put in for 2% now, they were in for 3%. There are other department heads in here that are in at three and a half percent. What, what discussion had the selectmen taken into position on?
All right, I want, Ed, I want you to clarify. When you say, let's say, when you say contractual obligations, you are talking about union contracts, period.
I'm not talking about those, please, I said.
No, Ed, Ed.
Outside of those, outside of what we have.
That's what I'm trying to get clarified. And what Brett is telling you is, the board of selectmen voted that for non-union department heads, and what Mrs. Aaronstein said was, the maximum they can get is 2% based on 80% or higher evaluation, and below that, it's 1%. And I think now, what I'm hearing tonight is, the elected department heads have reduced the amount of what they had originally asked for, which were up around three or so, and they are now in line with the 2% that the board has approved for the other department heads. Mallory, is that right?
You're not coming over.
Mallory, I think you need to get very close to the computer, please, thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, that's better, thank you.
I'm sorry. It is 2%. The electeds have reduced their request to 2%, and then none of the non-union personnel received over a 2%. That, myself, I received two and a half percent.
Okay, so when we go into a position that's in here that says three and a half percent, that's not a recommended by the?
Correct, correct. And I believe there's only one or two budgets that the department request would be over 3% because the others have requested that my, that I change that for them in advance of these meetings with the finance committee.
Okay, may I add something on to that?
So. Okay.
For the town administrator and for you, Mr. Chairman, do we, so we already, the board of selectmen already kind of sent to you the budgets with the 3.5. I think we're all in agreement that we are going to accept or will accept 2% instead of a 3.5%, but Town Administrator Aaronstein, is that something we need to vote on? Or is it just understood? Are we okay? We're good?
I guess I don't know what you mean by good. I think you've, not I think, I know, the, the board of selectmen have gone through the budget line by line, you've made your recommendations, and they're reflected in the Google document. If the board of selectmen is interested in revising those based upon what the finance committee says, you're opposeded and you're able to do that tonight.
Okay, I guess the question was, maybe it was to Selectman Goulart and Chairman Pacheco. Are we okay with 2% increases instead of 3.5? I am personally, because it's in line with the 2% kind of cap for the next fiscal year.
And, and I'm, Brett, I want, I think, I think that might be jumping the gun. I was just asking a question as we go through this, because there may be rationale and reason why some are where they are, and, but I just wanted to know what the gut feeling of the board of selectmen. I didn't want to, all of a sudden, you guys start changing stuff from your recommendations on where you're at, because we, there may be good rationale for why somebody got something higher than a 2%, but it was the trigger of the department heads. I don't want people to sit here and say, oh, the finance committee said, oh, nobody should get anything more than 2%. That's not what the purpose of that question was. And I don't want, because I know there are good reasons that people ask for more and deserve more than two or two and a, or whatever, whatever that number is. I was just asking for the rationale, and if there was any thought to it. No, it, it, don't, I don't want anybody to preconceive that Ed's saying that, because people love to say, Ed said. And, yeah, I just wanted to ask the question, because I, I perused every budget and looked at to see where they were, and then, and reading the notes on those changes prompted me to ask the question. So I'm not saying make any changes to anything right now, but I just wanted it out there just to, so people understood it, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. They, that went on a little longer than I expected the conversation to go, so, but, okay. Anybody else have any overall questions from the notes that Mallory gave at the beginning of the meeting?
Nope.
All right, so now we'll move into the board of selectmen budget, which is right at the beginning. All right, it is?
122.
What budget number did you say that was, Mallory?
122.
Used to, I'm used to Nancy's cheat sheet.
She even spoiled.
I scroll too fast on my computer sometimes. Okay. So the, the requested increase is, I'm assuming additional hours? On the, on 51XX? Or is that a new position?
No, we, we are asking for additional four hours per week.
So why is that budget number 51XX?
That's the carryover from last year. Chris, you could probably, it was a new position last year, and I think Chris can probably tell me whatever that number is. It's just the document we use to fill in all the figures.
Okay, so, yeah, so it, it's the account number, or the, the last four digits, the last two digits should be 5111.
Okay.
I just didn't have it at the time when I was preparing the, the budget doc.
So it's the line number?
It's the line, yes, it's, it's the expense line number, yep. I'll update the worksheet as soon as I can get into it.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. So the passports aren't done in the board of selectmen's office anymore, right?
No, they're done in the library.
But, but the budget for the stipend still falls under the board of selectmen?
Yes, we only recently moved them. Go ahead, Chairman Pacheco, sorry.
Yeah, no, they're still in our budget. I'm not sure if we should put it in somewhere else's budget, but right now it's in our budget.
Okay, no, I just wanted, I did, because I had known that it had moved from the selectmen's office somewhere else, but that, it doesn't, I mean, it's probably the most logical place for it.
If you increase the library's budget, you then have to increase how much you spend on books and periodicals, so, because it's, they are mandated to spend a percentage of their whole budget. I don't mind buying more books and periodicals, but we don't have a huge ability to do that, so we just be mindful of that, so keeping it in the selectmen's makes sense.
Okay.
Well, Mallory, I just have one question. I can see on my screen people across the top, but instead of seeing some, a person, I've now got a circle, a green circle with a receiver from a telephone.
Yes, Nancy, in the top right-hand corner, you can select different ways to view the meeting.
Oh, there's no picture of Ken.
Yes, click the, click the different options in the corner, the far right-hand corner of the window, the Zoom window, you should be able to change.
It's because Ken's on, Ken, Kent's on the phone and has his audio going, he doesn't have audio on his, on his computer.
Oh, all right, okay, no, that's fine. I didn't know if I was going to lose this. I'm kind of gun shy after yesterday.
No, plus, I think I get two votes now on anything.
Good try. I do, I have multiple lines going, if that were the case. Okay, um, so, and then, so, we like to see reductions, but when, we don't, we don't find it necessary for all the professional and technical? Is that what it is?
Say that again, Ed, I'm sorry.
The professional and technical reduction in expenses?
Line 5300?
Yes.
Yep, the board voted to reduce that, basically tipping away at a budget where they could.
Okay, because I see 2315 this year, we spent almost $26,000. Do we think the 30, the 25 is going to be enough for next year? What, what are some of the main things that fell in it this year that wouldn't have been, that are not going to be repeated next year?
The Miller's Lane, engineering, such, there were some.
Ed, we had to pay for appraisals, surveying, drawing plans for that, that Miller's Lane thing, and also, we've already got all of the work done, that kind of professional and technical done for the Complete Streets project, where we've got the three streets we're doing. So right now, we don't have a Complete Streets expense like this in the FY21 budget.
Okay. And then, I question if, on line 5341, the communications commingled billings, if we spent 22.6 in FY19, we have 20 in this year's budget, we've already spent 17.4, we still have four months left, that we're probably going to end up over expending that budget again, why would we leave it at 20,000? Anybody? I did, I, I mean, yes, we do transfers at the end of the year or whatever to, to fill it, but if we're spending 22 to 23 every year, we should be budgeting at 22, 23 every year.
So we calculated out what the, that's the phone system and some of the network upgrades, I'm actually, sorry, I'm just considering. It should not be that high, so.
It shouldn't be that, well, okay.
Like that 22.5 shouldn't be that high, so I'm going to have to look at that with Chris, and we can report back.
I just want to be realistic on it.
17, no, absolutely. So we did make a couple of changes after we rolled out the new phone system, because some departments were like, hey, it works better if I have this because of X, Y, and Z. So we increased the cost here and there, I think Tom Ferry's one of those, the Board of Health is one of those, and this is, of course, our first year, full year with having that. But I, I was comfortable with these numbers, and I presented them to the board of selectmen. There's also something that came out of the board of selectmen's budget, I just came upon, that should have been out of mine, so it might have been charged to professional technical, just to get back to the, just to get back to that. I, I noticed in my numbers that surges dues didn't come out, and I'm, I've got to go find out where it came from, and my hunch is that it came from the selectmen, so we'll have to fix that. Chris, are you dotting that down?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. And that's about $4,000.
Okay, all right. Anybody on the committee have a question on the board of selectmen's budgets?
Just on the extra hours?
Okay.
So, yeah, what, what are the extra hours needed for?
This is for, so that is Leanne Kerwin. She started as part-time. When we first asked for her, I advocated that it be full-time. We went incrementally with part-time, and even before the pandemic, we discussed that there was need for a full-time worker in that role, but we decided collectively to go forward with part-time. And she comes in for, it's about five hours every day, and it seems like once we're getting going, she has to leave. This is pre-pandemic, by the way. During the pandemic, she has been an instrumental part of our team, and we wouldn't be where we're at without her. Additionally, we, my recommendation has her at 30 hours instead of the 24 that the board of selectmen voted. I see this, the need for her to assist in grants, to assist in helping me go forward with some of the special projects we're moving along, and the, we've, I've been applying for some grants for FY21, because my gut is that we're not going to be doing any major projects unless it's state-funded, because we're not going to put ourselves out there financially without having the backup from the state. So all of these grants come with strings attached, and reporting requirements, deliverables, they come at different times, invoices to be tracked, all sorts of things, and I've been handling it now, but it's, it's getting, it's getting to be a lot. I have like spreadsheets, and I had to, I basically reported to the selectmen not only just to give them information as to where I was at, but to sort of organize myself as to where we're at with all these different projects. So she's also helped me with tax work-off stuff, that's been on hold a little bit because of the pandemic, but she picked up the ball and ran with it there. She assists in all of these things that, as Karen's playing catch-up, because she was overworked for years and kind of buried between all of the things that the selectmen had going through the office for the years. Leanne's working on the future stuff, the, the stuff that we've put together and rolled out to propel us into the future. We have a five-year plan that the selectmen are working on, and I could really use the assistance with her. So I've put in 30, 30 hours.
Do you mind if I just piggyback off that for a second?
No, bro.
So just, Mallory had alluded to things like reporting requirements for grants. This was actually something that, like, I know we did this in science when I was working in a lab and stuff, it wasn't something I was aware that you had to do. Like, for example, when we got the Green Communities grant, there's like quarterly reports that are due, and I think that we do need to have someone, like Serpide is willing to help us with that, but I do think we need someone with all these grants we're getting to help us keep track of, A, what the progress is, but also to help keep track of just the reporting requirements. Oftentimes, you have to send them data just to prove what you've done, and it's, it's a lot of legwork that like I didn't even foresee happening. And so when this came before the board of selectmen, Peter, I supported the 24 hours, but now that we've hit the pandemic and I've been able to see the value that Leanne brings in terms of just the board of selectmen, I'm going to support the town administrator's recommendation of the 30 hours. So I don't know if the board wants to reconsider it, but I definitely think it's valuable, especially with the memoranda that are being sent out just to keep everyone on the same page, it's just, it's a lot of stuff. And I'll give another example, something that Mrs. Brady used to do, Selectman Goulart, you'll remember this, do you remember that monthly schedule that really kept everyone on the same page?
The one that's not being done?
Yeah, things like, little things like that, I know that sounds like a little thing for me, working a full-time job and trying to juggle both things, I need that back. I need someone who can keep track of all our meetings, all our projects, the five-year plan projects, the grants, the due dates, all that. So if we could have someone dedicated to things like that and have enough hours to do that, that would be a really big improvement. So that's just my opinion as one person.
You mean the monthly calendar?
Thanks, I, yeah, Pete, does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I, I think we, I think, I know I agree that the hours are probably needed, it's just, you know, as we look at the financial impact, can we, when we're, if we have to tighten up, then, you know, is that the right time to be adding additional hours, even though we may need it, but, but we'll see as we, as we get through the process. Welcome to additional people to the meeting, Tom and Derek. Welcome to the meeting.
Evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Any, any other questions on the board of selectmen's budget? We'll move on to the town administrator's budget. As always, we start off a little slow, running behind as usual, as we get through the budget meetings.
So Ed, tonight, you're just going to go through as many as you can, and you're going to make your recommendations at your last meeting?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
I'm sure questions will come as we go along, as well as maybe before the recommendation night, and if there's someone, something we need, you know, give people the opportunity to get back to us as we go through them. But we'll get through the departments that are here, and then ones that we have to look at beyond that, so. Mallory, if you just want to jump, jump over and give a little overview of the town administrator budget?
So I share half of Karen, so it's split between the selectmen's budget and myself, my budget. I have some cell phone and vehicle and carve and education stipend, so that's rolled into one. I'm sorry that it's broken up that way, that's something else I need to work with Chris on because of how the accounting software divvies it up, so I apologize for how messy that looks. The $5,000 intern program, while I love it, and I'm happy to be able to give back to people who are learning in the field, and I think it's important to groom people for municipal roles. and I think it's important to groom people for municipal roles, my recommendations actually defund this program for right now based upon what's going on. It's not like we can add extra staff without proper PBE and protocols in place. So, unfortunately, my recommendations do eliminate this for this year, which is a $5,000 savings, not much, but it helps. You'll see that my professional technical line goes up and that is because we had some unemployment issues come up this past, this year that were a little nuanced. And we hired, I hired a specialized counsel to assist us. And he, he won for us, so it paid off. It's $440 a quarter. So, my professional technical line reflects that cost. And I tried to cut some expenses to absorb it and then even then have a little less expenses going out. I don't go through a lot of materials and supplies. I have a printer and a computer, so I don't replace a lot of equipment. So, there we, sorry. That's really the bulk of my budget. Did people hear?
Yep. So, I see that both the Board of Selectmen recommendation and your recommendation on salary are lower than what the departmental request was at the beginning. Does someone want to?
Sure, I can do that. So, my original request for the Selectmen was $117,000. That request was submitted in December of 2019 before COVID-19 hit us. I, once we were going, once the pandemic kind of rolled upon us, the Selectmen and I were working on contract negotiations simultaneously. They voted generously on this 2.5% increase, which, as we mentioned before, is a half percent more than any other employee. That's not in a collective bargaining agreement. And I found that to be very generous, given the economic climate before us. And I'm not, I'm not willing to, you know, kind of go for a higher amount. I'm just not.
So, but, okay, so I just want to ask the straight question. And what is 115, 312? What percent is that?
What the, it's 2.5%. My current salary is 112.5. So, the 115, 312 is 2.5% based upon this year.
Okay, because I was looking at what, what is the, the FY20 budget says? It's 113, 834, 70.
That's a, that's because there's two extra days, but that's a mistake. My, my salary is 112.5.
Okay. Okay. Any questions, or I scroll through, is there any questions on the Town Administrator's budget? Whether it be on expenses?
I have a question on, on the intern role. I understand the fact of reducing it and keeping it minimalized, but is there a concern with zeroing that out for, for next year? And then having to put it all back in the following year if we get the program put back? Or should we just keep some in reserves in that account? I know what my company's doing is because we're in the same boat that we've suspended the intern program for this summer. But a lot of those, actually, college students need the credit or are looking to look for the credit. So, they actually are going to do those in the fall semester if available. So, we've actually just suspended the budget until the fall to keep that on, you know, to keep the options open and keep those people on the hook, per se. Is there any options doing that with this line item as well? Or a portion of it?
So, our interns are normally during the summer. We have one that's present who's last maritime. So, his semesters are a little bit, I don't want to say off, but they're a different schedule. So, he comes back. I don't think we would have an issue if we funded in the fall if we wanted to do it at town meeting. But it was just a gesture. I, I love the program. I think it's fantastic. The town reaps a great benefit and so do the students. So, I don't mind putting something back in there. I just, I didn't, I just want us to be mindful of different things like this.
Yeah. I, I want to see us, when we get to the bottom line, see where we're at and do that evaluation. I think that's one that, I'm with Scott. You don't defund it if you're going to try and put it back in the future. You got to find a way, you got to find the balance of, because I've been around this a long time. You close out one budget, you try and bring it back a year or two later. It's, it's two or three times harder to put it back in than it is if you, if you leave it there. And it's not like it's something that's a huge substantial amount. At the end of the day, we might need it. But I think I'd agree to at least leave something open in it to make sure that, there, there may be a fall program where a college has gone all virtual that, that someone can do an internship tied into it sometime later on in the year or in between, in between semesters at the end of, at the end of a break in the fall, so.
About cost, we pay our interns minimum wage and the 5,000 was basically three interns.
Yeah, so, okay, okay. So, we'll, we'll keep that in mind when we get to the recommendations. Any other questions on the Town Administrator budget? Anybody?
Nope.
Moving on to the Town Accountant. Chris, before we get into the Town Accountant's budget, can you just jump to the capacity page, which is our overall look page, which I should have done at the beginning of the meeting? But once we get into looking at the budgets, I said, I'll wait till we actually call on Chris. But just review with us the, where we are with, and, and these are, and I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. This is based on the governor's budget and what has been submitted for this, for the FY21 budgets as, as on the, thanks, Mallory, as, is on the Google document, right? The 20.
It was prior to your last meeting on April 14th. I have not updated, this, this first number here, the 22,490. And I haven't updated it to what's actually in the budget document currently.
Okay, we need, because now that, now that we have a school number, I think we really need to make sure it's, it's correct.
Absolutely.
Because this is the most, to us, for the most part, this is the document that we work off of to make sure that we are below the levy limit and we can, we can afford everything that we have. So, if you can get this page updated, Mallory, even if afterwards, once it's updated, email that out so everyone has it before the next meeting, so, so we at least know where we're at.
Kevin, are you, are you receiving my emails now? I didn't get a bounce back from today.
Yeah, I got the one tonight. Well, the 12:57, I'm sorry. Yeah, I got that.
You did get it. Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so this, this, going forward, Chris, this, this, this page needs to be a living, working, live document as we go forward because it is something that we, that we, that's going to need to be updated after every meeting so we can have it to start making our recommendations, so we know what our true starting point is.
Absolutely. All right, just clarification, Ed. I'm going to use the Board of Selectmen's recommended budget total at the bottom of the, at the bottom of the budget document?
It, no, it should be, well, let's think. Because I think in the past, we always used.
Department request, I thought.
Yeah, department request to start.
Okay.
That way you know how far away you are.
Yep, to note, right. And then, as we make our recommendations, it becomes, the document becomes the Finance Committee's recommendations.
Okay.
CJ, you're, you're able to update the Google Doc, right? So, that you can put in your FinCom recommendations or?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I could last year. I assume it's the same.
Yep, well, we'll just make sure.
Okay.
Yeah, so Mallory, who has permissions in changes in the Google Doc?
It should be everybody. When I shared it, I, I wanted the Finance Committee to be able to be an editor. So, I can just look up, yes, CJ's listed as an editor here.
All right, just as, if anyone makes any changes, just let somebody know because I would prefer that CJ be the only one besides Mallory with Chris.
I agree.
Who make, who make changes in it.
Yeah. I don't need it. I don't want to make changes.
Neither do I. Because Mallory, you know what you, Chris and I were trying to figure out before the meeting started?
Yeah.
Touch that thing. You'll be.
Well, and then it was definitely my fault. I messed that one up.
You can actually see who changed what. There is a history thing.
I was just trying to call that up and it wasn't, it wasn't going fast enough, so I stopped the screen share, but yeah.
So, okay, all right, so let's just, now we'll jump back to the Town Accountant's budget. So, anybody have any questions on, everybody agrees that's what we'd like to see on that document from the committee? Yeah. Scott's got the Zoom lingo going with the big thumbs up.
You can do this now.
All right, so Town Accountant is budget number?
135.
Thank you. I'm, I'm assuming the salary line is because it was based off of our previous accountants' salary because you started after that?
You mean the decrease? Yeah.
Yeah, the decrease.
And also, just a bit of a clarification on Mr. Laviolette. So, because he doesn't, he wasn't with us last year, he didn't have any goals to be rated on. So, his increase is contractual. And he does now have a set of goals he's working on. And then for the next evaluation, he'll be judged on that.
Okay.
So, what is the increase? Because it gets pinned here.
So, my actual increase is 2%.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, and the decrease in sick time buyback is because we don't have an employee to buy back from this year that we did last year, correct?
Well, so there's a significant decrease, but we still have a potential buyback. The Assistant Town Accountant is contemplate, contemplating retirement right now.
Okay.
So, we're making provisions. We owe her, we owe her approximately, I think she's got approximately $15,000 of sick time accumulated.
Okay. Okay.
Did it be anybody else that could have a buyback in there?
No, she's the only one in the Accounting Department.
Yeah, there may be some in other departments, right? Mallory, are there any of those in other departments?
So, they're carryovers from this year. There were two listed for police. When we get there, you'll see that I have a question about it. And then Linda is in there. I, that's, those are the only buyback amounts that are put forward in the budget. As in submitted by the department, I should say.
Yep.
Also, I know we, we changed this, but the auditing line or the professional technical in the Town Accountant's line, Town Accountant's budget is the auditing cost. And that is like, I believe, Chris, it's the second year of a three-year contract with them.
That's correct.
Do you have it broken out?
Yeah.
5302?
I'm sorry, I'm on the Zoom thing.
Yeah, 5302, yep.
Yes. So, you had, previously, you put that out of Warren article, a special.
Yeah, I was just going to ask that. This is, this is something that used to be on, is a special article year in and year out, right? That we moved to a budget line?
Right, and now we moved it in the operating expenses because it's something that occurs every year. I think that was my first year in Diane that that happened.
Yeah. Did they, I know they always, every year, they pick a specific department that they did do a deep dive. What, what is in for this year?
I'm going back and forth with counseling and fire and fire only because they have that ambulance billing in-house now. So, we want to audit to make sure that the collections are being done correctly and they have good systems in place. It's a substantial amount of money, though.
Yeah. I think we did fire a few years ago. That's what precipitated us to, to change the split on what we put in ambulance versus what we put in fire. So.
Five or six years ago now, Ed?
Yeah, is it that long ago?
Could be.
Yeah.
Before me. It was 317.
Yeah, I'm still not that old. I'm still not that old.
And I, and I think I was on the Finance Committee then.
Yeah, thanks, thanks. Been, is that a, is that a shot that I've been here too long, maybe? No, kidding.
The road mark, the benchmark, the road. Landmarks, oh my gosh, I need a couple of costs.
Yeah, so, all right, any questions on the Town Accountant budget? We like budgets that go down $34,000. Those are good ones. Next up, and I see you, Mia, Tom Ferry, are you here live with us on, on the phone?
I am.
Welcome.
On the beach this time, Tom.
Very nice, Tom.
Mr. Ferry, I just got your message. You're going to pay for that.
Are they, are they?
Penguins.
Are all the people on the beaches, are they socially distanced back there?
Most of them.
Oh, most of them, okay, just checking.
Except the ones that are getting acquainted with each other.
Good going, Tom.
Thanks for lightening the mood, Tom. I appreciate it. Let's, we'll start with Highway, which is number, Mallory?
422.
422. That'll take you a while.
I thought you scrolled fast.
I overscroll. I have to go back.
That's the advantage of the paper notebooks you made for us.
It's the Finance Committee prefers the paper notebook. It's a binder that we print out each budget separately, let us know. The only drawback is if changes are made, they don't total up. But if you want one, we can put some together.
Yeah, I went right by it. I went all the way down the street sweeping.
Oh, that's stormwater.
Yeah, see? All right, so 422.
Is somebody talking?
Some.
Something going on in the background.
Oh, because I'm saying whatever you're discussing. I can't hear you.
If somebody has background music, if you go on mute. So, just starting at the top of it, Tom, I see your department request was a 2.5% increase. The Board of Selectmen recommended it at 2. Is that correct?
I don't recall the Selectmen's recommendation yet.
Okay.
It's 2%.
That's right, because you were, you were above the 80% thing, Tom.
And then, so is the 2.5 that's in the full-time salary, is that contractual?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Tom, is there anything you want to go over in the Highway Department budget before we start asking questions?
No.
Well, that was easy. So, Tom, just so you know, we did have a conversation about salaries in general on non-contract, contractual salaries at the beginning. So, the Selectmen and Mallory did fill us in on the, the rating system and, and we had a discussion depending on what finances look like at the end that will, some of the stuff we may review and ask further questions on, depending on where we're at and, you know, because there's a lot of unknowns. As you know, with, with COVID and all that, that there's a lot of unknowns to what the budget cycle is going to look like by the end of the day. So, we just want the, the major department heads to be aware of that because the worst thing we want to have to do is lay, lay people off. Lay put lay people off, cut services. And I know, Chris, at some point, we're gonna have, we'll have the discussion follow up to your email today regarding revenues. But we'll do that at some point. I just want to get through the budget part and we'll talk about.
Absolutely. You know, today may have even been slight just for edification. So. I don't believe, I mean, I haven't seen a real estate tax bill for the fourth quarter. But I'm under the impression that we didn't change the the due date on the on the real estate tax, on the on the physical bill itself. So the escrow companies were good about paying. You know, by May 1st effectively, we took in a big deposit or we took in big deposits during this past week. In excess of $2 million relative to to the real estate taxes. That represents about half of the fourth quarter. Billing that went out. But it could change easily as of there are still receipts sitting on. Sitting in the treasurer's office right now and, you know, not being open on Friday. There could be. There could be significant receipts to post. Next week even. As as some of the escrow companies or some of the third-party. Providers that handle the escrow payments for the mortgages and whatnot come in. So there could be a significant difference, and I'll try to update everybody on a weekly basis. If there's any significant changes, okay?
Yeah. So I I want to have a further discussion about revenues at the end of the before we close the meeting tonight anyway. So. I I just want to get through the we'll get through the budget portion of it and and then we'll have a further discussion about it because I think. We have to have a little more robust discussion than than that than just that one single point. So. So, Tom, that's a part of it is we, you know, we have to understand revenues and, you know. Primarily, the big departments need to would be the ones at the end of the day, we'll have to have a further discussion about welcome chief Mickey. So any questions on the highway budget?
Tom, is the equipment repairs we we've. Increased it last last year and keeping it basically the same now this year. Is that just because some of the equipment's getting older or just the costs of the? Parts are going up?
Yes, both. Yes. Cost and the fleet is getting aged.
And then, Tom, on the requested increase on details, is that because we have more additional projects scheduled for this year?
Last year, we fell in a shortfall because of a not funding adequately. It's unforeseen. How much detail we work we need, but we went and I think it was like excessive 12 grand. We were in a hole on that one last year. But we we're trying to find a happy medium there.
And most of that expenditure obviously comes in the spring. Into the summer.
No, that's year round. If if it's chapter 90 specific, then that 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 would be part of the 90 project, but. Anything else, we'd have to hit the four two two or the four three two.
Yeah, because I look at expenditures through that are on here through three fifteen. So we've only spent $6,500 of 25 grand this year. With three months to go. That's why I ask you for a large portion happens in the spring.
I've been using them almost daily since then, though.
Daily since January. Okay. I'm sure they appreciate it. Any other questions on the highway budget on that specific highway budget? Snow and ice, Chris, on 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 the excess page, is snow and ice closed out to the number that it's gonna finish at?
No, so I right now got. So I can't. I can't edit the the document. I'm looking at the I I'm looking at the exact document right now and. Whatever reason, I'm in view mode only. I can't get access to edit right now.
Okay.
But I do know that that number needs to change.
Yeah, because as of that, it was 40,822. It wasn't a bad overall, though, Tom, wasn't a. A high winter for us at snow and ice, right?
Oh, I'm.
The types of storms we have is it seems like a lot because we use more material on the smaller storms.
Yeah.
The biggest storms you plow till it's over then treat. But. It's it could be a lot lower than last year. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And as we know, that's one we don't want to go up on because we're allowed to.
Right, you can't go backwards.
Right, right. Council on aging. What number is it?
Five forty-one.
You skipped four three two.
I did.
I don't think I have four three two on tonight's schedule. This is part of my confusion because we get it submitted a couple of times.
Yeah, that's fine. We can do it because it technically falls under the highway department.
And I and Tom Pires is here on the call as well, so he can jump in.
Okay. Hi, Tom.
Hey, how are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm good.
So. On on the four thirty-two on the entire salaries, what are they? Are all the salaries in that that those those are highway department salaries, right? So they all fall into the contract? The full time and the part time?
Yes, in the part time, that's a real number. That's why it's a 10% plus. That's that's only because it's a real number this year. Last year it was a number that was just stuck in there.
Okay.
Tom, do you want to tell them about that contractual disposal thing because it's a new line?
I'm looking for the line. I don't think it was added in this one yet.
It's way up the top if you have. Well, for the finance committee folks and those that have the it's I put it at the top, it's old, so it sticks out.
Yep, I see it now. So. I just lost my page. So what it is is um, as some of you may or may not know, when you clean the catch basins. It's considered that's that in the street sweepings is considered hazardous waste. We haven't tested nothing. But part of our disposal past practice was just to add it to compost in town. And residents take that, put in their gardens. That's probably not a good thing. The proper disposal is cradle of graves that gets tested and all that. But along with our Ray Rose that does the catch basin work, he's looking at retirement possibly next July. And the truck was on my radar to get. You know, to possibly purchase a new one. And along with the disposal need, I. Line to take care of the basins cleaning we're doing now. And then in the future, we'll probably eliminate the catch basin truck and contract the cleaning with the disposal all in one in the contract on your next consideration on budget.
Okay.
That's that's six grand is not a real number. That's a number to work with because it's an unknown quantity right now.
So. So I maybe this is a silly question on on my part. On under street cleaning and stormwater. Why are there police details in street cleaning and stormwater? Shouldn't that all be just lumped into the highway department?
No, and they don't use details for those jobs that they're mobile. We use details in the stormwater for doing, you know, laying in infrastructure, some drainage. Reinforcements. Anything related with stormwater outside of the cleaning basins and sweeping.
Okay. Any questions on the four thirty-two budget?
Tom, assuming that the disposal line. You you stormwater would still have other equipment that needs to be rented and needs to be repaired.
Yeah, the street tree sweeper. And. And I'd like to someday we get another one. We used to have two.
We should have a lot of money turned back in gasoline and fuel this year.
There's no deficit.
Not really, because the departments that are essential, the ones that use the most fuel.
Yeah, but it's a lot less money.
Oh, well, at the present, well, no, Ed, not if you buy it locally on Route 138. It is if you buy it on Route 44.
It is cheaper, though. Okay, any other questions on five thirty or four thirty-two? All right, let's move to council on aging. Which is.
Five forty-one.
Five forty-one.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Like a pop quiz.
Just glad you guys have them at your fingertips. So I have a question, which is more of a general question about council on aging. Prime time, COVID-19. As we all know, and this is going to be a hard question, and I throw this to. On ferry, Tom Pius is aboard a health, the selectman. What is what is going to be? A plan of attack or has the board of selectmen and the board of health had a discussion about? Because we know that is the. Most dangerous population for contracting COVID. It's a program that's near and dear to my heart. It was very good to my mother. It's a very, it's a great program that we offer. But I think it's a hard decision that I think they the leadership in town has to decide. How we move forward with, and I'm not expecting an answer tonight, what we're gonna do, but I think. And it's not just going to be us. It's going to be council on agings across the state. What what is the plan for senior centers for programs like prime time? Where where does it go? And I I know this is probably not the time for that discussion, but. I think from a financial standpoint, we have to have a determination what we're gonna do as we start to move forward.
Mr. Chairman, do you mean a determination for fiscal year 2021? Are you talking more down the line?
I don't know. I I.
I know our.
Big on it's a big unknown, but I just, you know. When we get into our end and financial discussion, we have to know what. You know, we're not out of this. So, you know, like I said, Brett, you would understand this because you were on that school committee meeting the other night. We only can deal with the facts that are in front of us today.
Absolutely.
And we know it's going to be an ever-changing thing, but I think we have to have some thought and some discussion about it.
Sure.
At some point going forward.
So I I can only speak for the board of selectmen. I know we I don't think we have had a as a board, a. Real in-depth discussion about it amongst ourselves. I do know the town administrator has thoughts about it. I don't know if she's prepared to share them this evening, but on this, maybe I would defer to her just because the board as a whole hasn't had that conversation.
And I'm not asking for that. I I'm just, you know, my mind's thinking about our financial picture we have to do. And, you know, that revenue talk and and the unknown that we talked about at the last meeting we had, I just want to be prepared. Tom Ferry, you wanted to say something?
Yes. The board of directors early in March voted to suspend assist the program indefinitely at this time. Since then, I believe it was last week or the week before, the selectmen approved to officially lay off our. Part-time staff inside the program. So right now, all that remains the full timers that are on the town side payroll. I I reason I'm making that comment is for everyone that's on this page now. Knowing that you you what do you do? I mean, outside of any other discussion, you still got a budget, what's before you now?
I I think we do. I I personally, I think we do have to budget it. As we sit here today.
Correct.
But I don't know what the future lies that if we get towards the end of it and we see that revenues have dropped. 30%. And I think Mallory made the the comment at the last meeting we had that municipal government tends to lag behind when you get into an economic situation. Like we're in, you know, it may the picture may look okay today. Six months from now, it may look totally different. You know, we got all the revenues this year. We primarily made it through this year, which which defines what starts for next year. But six months down the line from now, we don't know what tax collection will be at the end of first quarter. You know what excise taxes will look like in January, and we have to forecast that out. But yes, we have to budget it today, Tom, but I think we have to have it in the mind of. What is in the long-term interest and how do we come out of this? And I think. That it that's going to be a tough one to swallow, but we have to figure out maybe a different way that we. Work within that system. So. That's just my my thoughts on it. And I throw it. I'm not asking anybody for. You know, I people will have opinions and we can share them tonight, but we're not asking to change anything on it yet, but. I think we just have to have it in our mind that there is going to be something that has to change, whether it's. A change in the program, a change in how we go to program. I think it's unknown.
Right. You're more moving to the financial business part.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
I totally agree. I think that that is a longer term conversation that will take a longer time to. You know, the different perspectives and come to a a consensus on a decision. So I I'm okay with budgeting it as is. I think that's what the board. But I I subscribe to that. I I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I think that's totally rational.
Yeah, when the we had the discussion about laying off the part-time people. I I think we for for this right now, yeah, we have to have the budget. And I think I said that night, I don't want to sound like doom and gloom. This is an extremely vulnerable population. And depending upon what happens with the virus and who gets it and who survives and who doesn't. I don't know if we will have sufficient number of clients to even run a program. And I mean, that's that's an awful thought, but you know, that's going to weigh in on the financial part of it, too.
Yeah, understood. Anybody else want to weigh in?
Is that's something that we're gonna have to kind of keep an eye on as 2021 rolls in, right? On a monthly or quarterly basis, at least kind of getting an idea once once things do open up, how how quickly normal comes back.
And what is that? And what's that normal look like? Tom Piers, did you have something you want to add?
From a border health perspective, we addressed it a little bit today. We had a emergency prep meeting. It really, we didn't come to any conclusions other than it's. We all agreed that is a very. Critical area. But, you know, until such time a treatment or vaccine comes out, which is a long time away. I I think, you know, we should be waiting for that period. So it'll be a while.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, I I just think there's a lot of unknowns at the moment. I'm in favor of the program. We have these pandemics every hundred years, you know, the last was nineteen eighteen. It's gonna be a while before we can have clients come back. I I understand that. I agree with Tom regarding the vaccine. But I think it's a value program. It's gonna come back slow, no doubt about it. And we have to, I think it was Brett who mentioned, we'll have or someone mentioned, we have to look at this quarterly and I really think we're going to have to do that. We can't I support funding it right now, but we have to look at our situation to go down the road.
I got a question for Chris.
Okay.
Uh, Chris, so let us assume we go into town meeting and we vote X dollars to for the council on aging. And the program doesn't open up. July, August, September, we're moving up to the special in the fall, whenever that's going to be. And it's clear at the time of the special, we haven't opened the program. For, you know, the virus is still or it's come back or we've lost clients, whatever. I believe, and this is what I need you to clarify, if we have a budget that had been previously approved. At the annual and we realize that we don't need the kind of money we budgeted, we can vote to reduce that, right, and reallocate?
That's correct. Town meeting can take that vote and reallocate those resources.
So the prudent thing, it would seem, would. So the prudent thing, it would seem, would be at least start out with a budget in case we can run some kind of program, but we got an alternative, uh, or an option down the road if we have to reallocate.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Nancy. Welcome to Ron Marino, Jonathan Gale, and the Fire Chief, and the Police Chief.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, guys.
Hey, Ron.
How are you?
Good.
The last one that we have for Tom Ferry is Cemetery.
Ed, if I have one question on the, uh, one more on the Council on Aging.
Sure, Pete.
It's a very small one, but I thought we were kind of moving away from, but now there's two, two clothing allowances back in.
What was the question?
Uh, clothing allowance. Is that, I know we were trying to move away from clothing allowances.
Those folks are, um, they are union employees. So for those two, I don't think there's.
Okay.
I know that would be Alice and Bella. One is a union employee.
Yeah, it'd be Bella or Sheila.
Sheila would come out of Primetime.
No.
Her clothing allowance doesn't come out of Primetime?
I, she, she would be a benefited employee, wouldn't she?
Can you shut this thing off?
On the town side.
Yeah, I think Bella's, I mean, Sheila's clothing allowance comes out of Primetime because there's a $200 figure there. And I'd also like to apologize. I haven't done my recommendations on these budgets. I apologize, but I'll make sure they are done.
Yeah, so, so it said, so it was, it was 400 in FY19, it was 200 in FY20, it's going back to 400 in FY21. I don't know. We didn't add anybody. We didn't change anything, right?
Correct. Should be the same.
Okay.
We'll have to verify how the, which budgets pay for which employees, and then just make sure. And Chris and I, uh, Chris Loviala and I can handle that from the back end.
Okay, so Cemetery is what line?
191.
So no, no increases, Tom?
No.
All right. Mowing contracts in place, Tom?
Yes.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Tom, just a general question. Um, this is gonna sound gruesome, but, um, do we have much income from the sale of plots?
You do not. Most, most of that covers the excavating part.
Okay.
A proportion of that goes for perpetual care, so, um, the town coffers technically wouldn't see it.
Yep. What cemeteries, right now, does the town have that the, the residents could buy space in? Where are they? There's one in, uh, again, the West Dyson Church, right?
Yes, that one's basically full, but, uh, the most, the most recent one that we, uh, advertise, and I guess you can call it, is Riverside. That's where the, the newly, um, acquired land the town got about 12 years ago, and it's been surveyed, plotted out. So it's Riverside Cemetery. Off a Lincoln Ave.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Any questions on Cemetery? Thank you, Mr. Ferry. We're gonna move on to ADA?
549.
What, what was that one? What?
549.
549. Thanks, Nancy. Jonathan, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
How are you tonight?
Doing well, thanks.
Good.
Um, Jonathan, I just want to share what we discussed today, that, um, I noticed that they're so expensive listed on this budget. And there were some that are allocated, I believe. So that's another something we have to look at with Chris Loviala. So I have a note there. If you're looking at the budget document, you'll see my note about expenses.
And so far, there have been no extra expenses.
And then, I know we just put the position in last year. Is, the, can someone explain the recommended increase of 33% in the stipend?
I can ex, I can explain. It was funded in October for eight months, and now it's gonna be funded for a year. So that's why there's an increase. So we, we funded it for two-thirds of a year, and now it's gonna be increased another third because it's a full fiscal year. So that's why there's an increase.
It's, it might be looking at the wrong, because I'm going off of the, I'm not looking at the, I'm looking at the individual spreadsheets, but am I looking at the right number, 2,000?
That's what it was this year. The, the request is for 3,000.
That's actually a 50% increase.
Yeah, and so on this, on the individual spreadsheet, Mallory, that it's still saying the 2,000.
Oh, ooh, I did it again. That's my fault. Okay, I'll, I'll fix that right now while you guys discuss. I'm sorry.
So.
And, and not to go, go to say 2,000 again, at, at the special town meeting when it was voted on, it was, I mean, I took it as 2,000 was gonna be a normal annual, but that's basically what I voted on.
Me, I, I would agree, Peter. I, I, I did not.
I agree as well.
No, no one had, yeah, no one had, you know, I know we had long discussions about this position.
Mallory.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Mallory.
All right, thanks.
So, uh, just.
Well, I, I, if you don't mind, I remember that meeting and that quote. I was the one that advocated for this. And my recommendation was to pay the salary at $250 per month, or a stipend of $250 a month. But I also realized we, we can only do it for the rest of the fiscal year, so that's why it was 2,000. My recommendation from day one has always been a stipend of $250 per month. So for a year is $3,000. And presently now, I'm not sure if everybody's, uh, familiar, but we were given a grant of $30,000 to review all of our town buildings as far as making sure that we're in compliance with that ADA. That report's gonna come out in June. It's gonna entail a lot of work, quite frankly, as we review what needs to be done. Obviously, we have to take into consideration our fiscal situation in town before we can do any projects, but I, it was always my understanding, in fact, when I met with the Finance Committee way back when, that was my recommendation, that it be $250 a month. I think when it first came out, it came out as 3,000, and I, and I pointed out that we're only funding it for eight months, and it was reduced to 2,000, so.
It's. I, I personally don't remember it that way.
This is, this is Jonathan?
You, yeah, Jonathan, let me just finish. I'll, I'll let you.
Sure.
That, this was a whole bigger position that actually whittled down to what it, it was. I don't, I, Ken, I, and maybe I'll go back and look in, in our notes and whatever. I don't think there was ever discussion about 250 a month. I think it was a straight stipend. I, I don't, personally don't ever remember the conversation that, okay, we'll go to 2,000 because it's only eight months. I think we agreed to $2,000 as the stipend for the position. I, I don't believe there was ever a monthly discussion. I could be wrong. I'm just going from my.
I'd, I'd like to see that Warren article that we approved as well, or what was meant, how it was mended on the floor, because I knew that came back and forth as well, just to understand what we did approve at that point. Because I agree, we approved the $2,000 stipend.
Right.
Well, the town did. We didn't even recommend it. The town recommended.
Right. So we'll go back and look at it, but I, I just think in, in this time, trying to take a stipend up from 2,000 to 3,000, when we, we, in the last couple of years, have told people, don't ask for any increases in stipends, and in some cases, we reduce stipends. So I, I understand it's a new position that has a, that has a grant. Some of us have a different view on, on where that position should, should sit. But I think from a stipend standpoint, it's something we just put in place, and to be increasing it by that significant amount, it's not a huge dollar amount. Okay, I'm not saying that in, in the $17 million or $20 million, we spend, $1,000 is not a huge amount. It's just the principle of raising the stipend when we've asked others to reduce stipends and or cut back on stipends that have been in positions of doing those, those jobs for, for a long time. So. But go ahead, Jonathan. I know you wanted to speak smart.
So what I, what I would suggest is that, first of all, um, although the stipend is $250, and you are correct, it is not a significant amount of money either way, in terms of the budget. It is still dollars that the town has to allocate. I understand that. It was my understanding at the special meeting in October, similarly to what Ken said. I don't know if there are transcripts of the meeting or not, or how, how that lays out, because there was discussion about it being $250 per month and 2,000 for the remainder of the fiscal year. And that was the key phrase, I believe, that was used, at a normal rate of $1,000. Having said that, I remember in conversation with the FinCom last year, you're right, there was initial proposal for a much different figure, and it was changed to this figure, but there was also discussion of continuing that potentially on, uh, uh, the funding of a grant and/or other factors. Now, the grant itself does not have money to cover this $3,000. That grant is for the town to have an overview done and for a report to be, to be given. That grant is currently in the works, and the report hopefully will be issued, given everything. They're doing an amazing job. It may actually be timely, considering they have to come out and do a lot of things around the town as well, which would be mid or late June. Once the report is issued, then there's gonna be a lot of work that has to be done in order to begin to put things in place, work with the FinCom, because there's gonna be a much more of a moment with the FinCom going forward from there, not for this position, but for the work of what needs to be done to mitigate what needs to be corrected within the town and what needs to be revised within the town. And that's everything potentially from town policies and procedures to buildings, to walkways, to ramps, et cetera. So that's gonna involve a lot of hours and a lot of time placement that is gonna have to be required to be put in. And by doing that, the town's also mitigating the potential for litigation down the road from residents, from the government, from the state or the federal government. So again, that's another reason to have, to me, in my opinion, to have this position in place. Also, I think what you're gonna find, and I know the census doesn't come out for a while yet, obviously, it's gonna be at least a year down the road, if not longer at this point, because of everything going on. What we're gonna find in the census is that there's an increased population of seniors in the town that would ultimately potentially require or need if not more ADA services, more ADA accessibility to resources within the town, and that's a different factor. Again, you're also gonna find out that there are probably more people who are self-identified as having disability within the town of all ages. That's gonna require other resources and other services within the town. As well as going forward, you know, as I've been listening, I've been hearing the conversation, nobody knows what the lag is gonna be, as, as, as you said earlier, with regard to how the town's gonna be affected by what comes in down the road. Having said that, I'm sure in the end result that everything the town has planned for, and all the, the heavy, hard work that Mallory has done, for example, for future potential for grants and so forth, a lot of that may change. And some of those grants may disappear, some of those grants may, may be cut back, or they may be put on hold by the state or the federal government. So it's gonna behoove whoever is doing this to be able to work with Mallory and work with the Board of Selectmen and with the FinCom to try and really assure ourselves as a town that we're on top as, as many potential grants for the work that's gonna be done going forward. There's also another component, which is the Mass Office of Disabilities requires that there be a town employee who is an ADA coordinator if you've got over 50 employees. Now theoretically, that could be someone else. I'm not saying it should or it shouldn't be. But what I'm saying is you have to have a town employee as the designee. If it's another person other than the dedicated person to that, I'm wondering if in the end the amount of time that person is going to have to dedicate to the position and to putting together, potentially putting together a committee or putting together a commission and doing the ancillary work on a monthly basis, is gonna be far beyond the cost of $3,000 based on their position and their salary. And I think that's something you do need to consider.
So I, I have a couple of follow-up questions.
Sure.
Because you, and actually, you just mentioned one of it. I, I thought the town was in a position where we were establishing an ADA commission. And if we establish an ADA commission, is it not the commission's role to direct what we do from an ADA standpoint in implementing the grant as well as the, the, I think that was part of the discussion last year was, well, establish a commission, have the commission determine if it can be, if we, if it's in the best interest to have the town administrator, the building inspector, um, implementing what's necessary for the town for ADA? So what, what will, and someone, one of the, excuse me, correct me if I'm wrong, or Mallory, tell me, what is the purpose of establishing an ADA commission? And what's that role versus what the role of an ADA coordinator is? I don't know who wants to handle that.
Mallory, do you wanna go? Do you want me to go?
Like staring at Ken, because I, I don't know if he wants to. I, Jonathan's correct when he says that town, or anybody with more than 50 employees and ADA coordinator, but you know, to be honest, other, other people could do that job, like other, um, in my previous community, I was actually a selectman.
A question about that, Mallory? Does that, or Jonathan, because I'm not familiar with that stipulation. I think we all agree that the ADA coordinator positions should exist. I think what we're talking about is, or what the Finance Committee, because the Board of Selectmen already voted on this, whether it should be funded or not. Does, does that statute, state statute, say anything about that it needs to be like a paid position or a full-time or part-time?
Has to be a, a paid employee of the town. Doesn't stipulate full-time, part-time.
And it, so then as long as it's within their duties and they're receiving a salary, they're a paid employee?
It's my understanding that that is correct. What I'm suggesting is that to put everything together that I just outlined and discussed, if the person who is designated to do that is doing that, and to answer your question about a commission, there isn't a commission yet. Mallory and I were beginning and Ken to talk about putting together a commission, and then, of course, you know, the, the world fell apart. So, um, a commission has been established yet. Um, the ground rules for the commission and the outline for the commission is in its infancy stage. I don't envision a commission, I'm not necessarily, depending upon how everything goes, if a commission could be established this year or would have to go to next year. In either case, once the grant is completed and we receive the study from the grant in late June and we get the report from that, it's gonna be the responsibility of the town, i.e. whoever, I'm gonna say the coordinator, to begin to work and move forward on the implementation and development of a strategy on how the town's gonna begin to do what it needs to do to become compliant, if not more.
May I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
So, um, the commission has actually been established by law because that's what town meeting did, so that does exist. And there are, I believe, three people on that. One is Jonathan as the ADA coordinator, one is Chico, and the other, I think, is Jocelyn Tavara, who volunteered to serve on that. So there are people, it, yes, it is in its infancy stage, and my thought was, once we did get these reports from the ADA vendor, which is well underway, we have, um, we're rocking and rolling on that, regardless of social distancing, so that's good news, that that would be a to-do list or an action plan of sorts for the commission to go forward on. And yes, these are big-ticket items, that some of which we could handle in-house, but I think most of these would be project grants because I'm not, we're not gonna be able to ask the, you know, town meeting for an elevator in town hall. It's gotta be a grant, it's gotta be something else. So I, um, I just wanted out there that the commission actually is established. There are people on it. We do have to do more about getting seats filled, vacancies filled, but I, I believe there is an interest by others, that people have expressed their interest.
So I have a question about the ADA coordinator position, which is technically, is it, needs to be an employee of the town. Is this position established as an employee of the town, or as the Board of Selectmen set it up as a special, quote, under Mass General Law, special employee? How, how does that work?
The ADA.
Yeah, right. It has to be an employee of the town, and this position is not an established employment position.
So I would actually like to look at the statute because technically elected officials, paid or unpaid, are employees of the town under the
They are considered, they are called special employees.
Right. So you, I'd have to look at the language just to be sure, so I don't want to make a comment on that. But this position did exist. I believe Selectman Guler had served in it, and it was combined with the EEO officer. And this has been around in our town for a while. The Select, this current board had put together with Jonathan's help a description of duties and voted on that, and then Jonathan has put up notices that are requirements of the law and sort of kick-started this grant. So we've, as we've refined, I guess, our desire to eliminate barriers to our
Okay. Well, I just want to go back to the financial part. I want to go back and look at the minutes from the special because I still have a concern about increasing the stipend by
I just tried to find them online and I couldn't very quickly, but I can ask you to email those out.
Okay, okay.
I add just some additional information. Mallory is correct. It, the position has always been held by a member of the Board of Selectmen, and I was blessed with that title in two thousand and seven. And I served as EEO and ADA until two thousand, I think I finished out the term two thousand twelve into two thousand thirteen. Because I even had it when I was on the Finance Committee.
Yep.
And then I asked not to be reappointed to the two because I had so many titles and things going on. And Tom Adiris on the Fire Department was appointed to those two positions. There wasn't additional compensation. It was just that you've got to have somebody listed and they got to be an employee of the town. And then Tom served until he asked not to be reappointed, and that's when Mr. Gale was appointed.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions on that?
Mallory, this is more just a general question, but the professional and technical is the translation cart services. I'm assuming, is this for Town Meeting? Is it for?
Right, if we need a translator or any sort of, like if somebody comes to us and they say, I have a hard time hearing, I need, if you can give me a sign language interpreter, we'd use that line. If somebody needed something translated into Braille, things like that. It's trying to be all-encompassing because it really could be for anything. That, I'm not the expert on those services, Jonathan.
That's exactly what that would be for. If, you know, it can be a language barrier for that matter. If somebody wants to attend a meeting but needs a language interpreter, if they're a language, a language of the town doesn't have somebody who can speak and we need a formalized interpreter, if there's a legal situation in town or a legal document and they need an interpreter, then this would be allocated for that. If they do need something translated to Braille, or if the town decided, you know, that they need to have certain material automatically in Braille, for example, or if they need an interpreter, or if they need cart services, yes, at the Town Meeting for things like that, or if we had to rent or space in a different venue because there's somebody who has a wheelchair and a type of wheelchair that might not be accessible to a facility that currently exists for X meeting. So the answer is that's what that's for.
Wouldn't that come out of the individual meeting budget if it was a Board of Selectmen's meeting out of the Board of Selectmen's professional?
The tough part, it was, it would depend on, are you asking where, who would pay for it depending upon what meeting it was?
Shouldn't it come out?
I think, yeah. All right, Peter, go ahead.
Shouldn't it come out of that, if it's a Board of Selectmen's meeting, it should come out of their professional and technical line? If it's Town Meeting line, it should come out of a Town Meeting line?
I would think that, I mean, I'm not involved in the budgets at all, but from my perspective, I can't determine where it would come from. What I know is that if a resident contacts me and needs any of those services, I need to make arrangements for those services. And then, of course, I would defer to Mallory and to the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom to ask, how's this going to be paid?
The Fire Department, if the Fire Department needed someone out of their line, not?
Right, I agree with you, Peter. I don't think you actually could use this line item unless it's something related to the ADA compliance or our ADA applicability. You couldn't use this translator line to fund somebody going to fill out a passport application and needing a translation. I don't think that would be applicable.
Except that that is a requirement of ADA.
All right. All right, thank you, Jonathan. Thank you for your insights. Ken, appreciate your feedback. We'll do some more research and
All right, thank you for your time.
I'm sure we'll speak again before we make our recommendation on the budget.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Police Chief, are you still with us?
I am. Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Chief.
How you guys doing?
Good. How are you?
Chief, I'm sure no one has any questions for you at all.
Probably not. I would hope not. No. Maybe a few.
Department two ten.
Hi, I'm almost there. I found it. I think I found it without anybody telling me, too. Not bad. We're only running thirty minutes behind. Chief, maybe we can catch up.
That's pretty good.
Thanks. I didn't have dinner yet. So on the, starting with the one, Chief, just so you know, we've had lots of discussions about salaries tonight in general and two percent versus three percent along those lines.
Correct.
I see that your request is a three percent. I'm assuming what the Board of Selectmen and and TA's recommendation are at a two percent. Is that correct, Ken?
Well, the, what it is, is it was put in there three percent because of whatever the union got, I would get as a percentage. But that changed because what they did now is they, you had evaluations, and the evaluation for me was a one percent. So I don't know, if you have that one sixteen nine oh seven,
Yeah.
that should change to one fourteen six forty eight seventy.
So it's a one percent, Matt, Ken?
That's correct. Mr. Chairman.
So it would go to one, you get that Ed, one fourteen six forty eight seventy?
That's what they had as recommendations?
That's what the Board had, yes.
As you know, as a department head, that you can have further discussion on that.
Correct.
The floor makes that final determination.
Correct.
But do the chiefs have contract?
Yes, I was just going to say the chiefs, the town accountant, myself, the two chiefs and Karen Brady have contracts, so the Board of Selectmen would set the wages. It would just, if Town Meeting authorized it, okay, but the board votes on the wages.
Okay, okay. So that's an agreed-upon contractual thing, okay. And then, so Chief, moving through the budget, I see the increase in full-time with a reduction in reserve. Is that because you are looking at putting in additional full-time? Let me make, I need to make, for a public acknowledgement, that my nephew is now a reserve officer in the town of Dayton. I just want that on for the record.
And he, and he completed his train, he completed his training, and he is now working by himself.
Yeah, so I just want that people know that he, that I will refrain from part of that. But I, this is just the overall topic discussion is, is that because you are going, you are reducing the number of and looking for the timer, or what, why is the
If you see the full-time line, Ed, the number there is the union in July will get a three percent increase.
Yeah.
And that's added in there. And then I took the reserve line and twenty-five thousand, as you see, I took that away from the reserves, and I want to put an additional full-time officer on the department. My reason for that is we've been having a lot of issues with traffic in the town, speeding areas. And we put a sign out, and you know, the signs is out there for a while. And then they continue to go, you know, over the speed limit or whatever they're doing, and we get complaints about it. So I'm looking to put another man on. Right now, I only have two guys on the shift on a four to midnight. There is three, but one of them has the night off, and then there's two. So having two guys on there on a shift, I believe, you know, I think that we need to boost that number up. Town's growing, and I think that if we can get another officer in here, I think that'll help us a lot, and that's why I did that.
The Board of Selectmen, I see that the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator agreed with that recommendation. Is that? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is the, and then additional question with the schools being out, and this is a this-year question. Is the school still committed to the obligation of funding the resource officer even though school has been suspended through the end of the year?
No, they are. They're still funding it.
Okay, okay.
Three quarters through the March date, you had used about half of the overtime. I'm guessing that maybe you're using more now with everything going on?
No, right now, actually, we're not. We're trying to not have people take time off unless they really have to. We're looking into, if they want a day off, I'm telling them to take either holiday or a personal day right now. I believe the town, that's what they wanted us to do right now, try to hold off on time off.
Well, that opens up another question. And this is more general. Is that the direction the Selectmen have given, that people don't take time off during this time?
No, that's coming from me right now. Due to this, due to this, what we're going, situation we're having right now, that was me, tell them limited time off if they can, if they can, they need a day off, I give it to them, but I'm not looking at taking a week, two weeks off at a time.
So what happens at the end of the year with all of the pent-up vacation time that guys have?
Well, that came up at the last Selectmen's meeting, and we're going to be discussing it again because we talked about carrying it over into the new year and at the previous meeting. So then at the last meeting, I brought up the possibility of paying everyone off on the last payroll in June, so we do not carry that unfunded liability into the new fiscal year, because if they can't use it in the new fiscal year and they've already accumulated the new benefit vacation for that fiscal year, this thing is just going to keep going. So the, another option is, and again, this is only at the discussion stage, another option is try to figure out how many people can use vacation before the end of June to determine what the liability is at that point, but it's up in the air, Ed, because it's a problem.
So I asked the question, I understand in public safety, making that request and asking guys during the times that we're in today, but is that across the board in all departments in the town right now?
When we've discussed it.
That we will have this massive amount of pent-up vacation time because we have people working at home, they don't necessarily need to take a vacation day, and then at the end of it, everyone's going to come back, and we have this pent-up, quote, vacation bonus to have to pay out at the end of the year. I don't think we fiscally could do that.
It backs up even further because what we had said was, when we started talking about this whole thing with the virus and people working from home and some people, they don't have the equipment, can't work from home, that entire situation. The first statement was, we didn't want any employees to lose vacation benefits because of the virus, and so we would continue to pay employees. And then we had the discussion about, should we carry over unused vacation? And then, as I said at the last meeting, I asked if we could look at paying off all unused vacation, and if somebody could use vacation, I know somebody who is planning it, which would mean from the total, you deduct all of the time that individual would use. But the problem is you are carrying forward that huge unfunded liability. You're inflating your free cash artificially. You still owe the money, but the other thing was, going back to the original statement, we don't want to penalize employees, which I understand, and I certainly support that. As far as funding it, we have been looking at what is available in the current budget. We've been looking at the possibility of, so you come up with a total. What's this vacation time, what's the value of it? Predicted for June, let's say June thirtieth. From that, the money that you, that is actually paid out, because people do take some time off, you reduce it further. You say, how much money do we have in the budget that we could put towards paying off this vacation? And then you also look to see, what do you have at free cash when you go to Town Meeting, and also what do you have in other lines that you could vote transfers on? All of that is up in the air. We don't know, because we haven't had the next round of discussions.
Okay. It's something we have to think about because
Absolutely.
we're creating a, we I'll wait, I'll wait to make my final assessment on it as we go forward.
We're all doing that, Ed.
Mallory, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to tell the Finance Committee this evening, or maybe late this afternoon, I can't remember, but Chairman Patiko and I were discussing about having a meeting to discuss those figures and make a decision. We're trying to meet with schedule that's very tight, so we're working on having answers to those kinds of questions. And I think at the end of the day, it might be a combination of a lot of things. You know, forcing people to use their vacation during, you know, before June thirtieth, cashing out some, and then allowing to carry over. But we have to have that conversation, and Chairman Patiko and I are trying to schedule that around your meeting schedule so we can give you an update on that.
Okay, all right.
This issue is not unique to the site at all. I mean, it's very consistent with what every business, every town, the state, every state is going through. So I mean, we shouldn't really be setting the precedence for this. Why aren't we looking and following what someone else is doing? Like, my company, for example, they're doing coal. So they are asking everyone to continue to use vacations as you have planned, just knowing maybe less. It's like tomorrow, I'm taking tomorrow off to use up a day. It's a good for mental health day in this stressful situation. You balance it all out. Then they're letting us carry over a certain percentage, and they extended the carryover period. So now we normally have to use any carryover by the end of February. They've extended it to the end of June next year. So they're giving us a little extra time, they're capping them out. And then anything in excess of that, if at the manager's discretion or the department's discretion, if it's in their budget, they are allowing a certain very little number of buyback days. So, but, but again, this is not unique to us, so we should actually be following what everyone else is doing across the state and just making sure that we're consistent with that approach, because everyone's going to run into this.
We're not trying to recreate the wheel. The whole conversation was started by, I requested if the board would consider allowing, usually the limit on vacation carryovers to be and allowing the entire year for them to use it, and it just kick-started this whole discussion. So we're just still having that discussion. But yes, it was inspired by other communities. I agree with it. I agree with it.
Scott, just also, I have asked around other communities, and I was, yes, they're dealing with the dilemma, but the other thing I found out was some communities actually award vacation based on date of hire and not on fiscal years. So they've got a whole bunch of, depending upon employees, all different dates when they would have to use their vacation by. So I kind of just set that aside because I wasn't aware that was out there. by, so I kind of just set that aside, because I wasn't aware that was out there.
Trust me, so is the town contract similar to what I deal with at the water district? On July 1st, you have all of your four, if you get four weeks vacation, it all goes into your bank on July 1st, there's no, there's no vacation accrual?
Right, that's, and then you have to use it by June 30th, it's a use it or lose it, and then the contracts allow up to two weeks, these are collective bargaining agreements, allow up to two weeks carryover.
Okay, all right.
And some other.
Hey, so Chief, I just have, I have one other question, the, can someone just explain to me the whole energy line thing? That was in the budget, that's now not in the budget?
Energy line? Mallory, yeah, go ahead, Mallory, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I was just going to take that. So where the building, where 1458 Somerset Avenue was a new building this current fiscal year, we didn't know what the energy impact would be. At the same time, we had moved all energy expenses out of departmental budgets into public buildings, and then, um, so we funded the police department because we didn't know how to absorb that, and if it would be a problem. We ended up paying for the police department's energy bills, and so far, so good, we're within our line, so we deducted the 24,000, or, yeah, I think you deducted it in your recommendations, Chief, but we deducted 24,000 because the public buildings department, 192, is paying for energy for all town buildings, and that's too full, that's so we can better track our energy use for D O E R and our reporting requirements for green communities, and also make sure that the town's bills are getting the energy aggregation amount, um, because we had found that some of, we were being overcharged and taxed in some cases, so it helps us manage that.
And then, and then on the, on 5250, the building repairs and maintenance, I know, Chief, you had a recommend, you had requested 25,000, so I'm assuming you had a project that you wanted to do in the new building?
Well, that number I put in there, Ed, is when we were doing the, I was doing the budget, um, I thought of things that if something, being a new building and something broke down, uh, we were doing other things that we wanted to do here, I'd have the money there, and, and, believe me, I was going to look at a, um, things for the inside of the building and outside, doing the irrigation, that's some things I thought of, and I brought to the attention to Mallory, and she looked it over, and then she sat with Jimmy Aguiar, and they kind of looked over things, Jimmy, who knows a lot about all this stuff, gave his input, and then Mallory got back to me and an email, and I saw it, and, and, you know, I'm fine with it, what they, what they talked about.
Okay, okay.
Hey, Ed, on that energy thing, in addition to what Mallory said about aggregation, uh, the town also, as of the 1st of April, is into the Constellation Energy Program with Mass Municipal, which means all town buildings, not residents, town buildings that are serviced by National Grid, get an additional penny per kilowatt hour discount, and that's a two-year contract, so there should be additional savings for electricity in the FY '21 year.
Okay, thanks, Ed.
Yep.
Eddie, in that line, though, it's 5,000 in there now, though, right?
That's what's in the board of selectmen recommendation.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay, okay.
There is one more thing to figure out on that, though, Chief, about comparing the chiller contract, I just want to make sure of that.
Okay.
You just need to be mindful about this, because you just need to be mindful about it.
All right.
Anyone have any other questions on, anyone have any questions on the police department budget? Yeah, Chief, just be aware, we want to review again before we make our final recommendation, and it's something that can always be adjusted at, in the fall, is, is, um, what the impact of adding that additional officer will mean, um, in a reduction of overtime, especially since this year, it looks like there'll be a significant turn back in overtime based on where the trend is right now, so just want to probably have a further discussion before we finalize at the end.
Okay.
All right.
No problem, Ed, thank you.
Anybody else? Let's move to communications. Chief, you want to go over anything on communications before we get into it?
Um, yeah, look at, um, where my stipend is, it has 10,400.
Yep.
Change that to 7,000.
Okay, so follow the recommendation, yep.
Yes, yes, whatever the recommendation, I don't have the recommendation, but, yeah, that goes to 7,000, okay?
Yep.
Um, I'm looking, I'm looking at, I don't know why, but, on the uniform allowance, for some reason, I have 1,200, that doesn't seem right. It should, it should be, it should be 2,400. But then, the dispatches, the 911 operators, they're in negotiations, their contract ends in June, so they haven't negotiated anything yet, as far as I know. So that line there, right now, if they were to get, they get $600, so it should be $2,400 there right now, so I don't know if that'll change, because they got to have negotiations, so. Um.
Can I ask a question on that, then? It's just a level fund it, so were people not collecting their uniform allowance? Were they not buying them?
Oh, no, they are.
Because FY '19, we only spent $1,193, and this year it was budgeted at 1,200, and they've only spent $167.
Yeah. I'd have to, Eddie, I'm going to have to check that one.
All right, so, Chris, can you, can you work with the chief on that and make sure that's, uh, that that line's updated, if it needs to be updated? And then?
If I, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah.
Uh, line item 5152 is actually in both the salary subtotal, the personnel expense subtotal, but there's also a line item in the expenses.
Yeah, up top.
So it's split between salaries and expenses, it shouldn't be, it should all just be one line item.
Yeah, you have it into.
Uh, under the salaries, I'm not sure why it's split.
You know why it's like that, Chris? Because they're allowed to, um, receive a check. See, some will go out and buy items and get a receipt and bring it back, but they are allowed to, if, let's say, one of the dispatches wants the check, so they'll get a check for $600, that's why there's two lines there like that.
Oh, all right, we don't have to track, so, we don't have to track it that way.
I'm going to, I'm going to ship that back to Mallory, can you review the contract on that, because I don't think you can do that anymore.
I don't think you can do that either, and I don't think, if you are, like, if I buy a product on behalf of the town, and I'm reimbursed for it, it gets charged to whatever line it would normally come from if the town charged it, so that doesn't make sense to me, and I'll, we'll review that.
Yeah, because.
I put stars on the comments.
See, this is, we, I, we've gone through this back and forth, clothing allowances for the purposes of stuff you will use at work or necessary for your job, it is not a bonus for you to get a $600 check at the end of the year, when you decide you don't want to buy anything to use at work.
Additionally to that, the board of selectmen has recently come out strongly on this point, so nobody should be receiving any sort of money at the end of the year for their clothing allowance, and, um.
Yeah, so can you guys get together on this? Because this should be, it should be one line item, and Chris is right, it should be in expenses, and so can you guys get together and figure that out?
But those two lines like that, that's the way, that's the way they were doing it, but I believe if they receive the check, they receive the check in July 1st, they receive the check that first week, $600, that's how they were, that's how they were doing it, that's how it was being done.
Yeah, so Mallory, can you look into that, please? Thank you.
Yes.
All right, thanks, Matt. Let's see, um, so, Matt, in the, um, so that there is no, in the salaries lines, because they don't have a contract yet, there's no increases in there, correct?
No, but I, as you saw that, I'm actually looking into, um, putting the dispatches, right now, um, they have different days off, everyone has a different day off, I want to change that in a contract, which I'm going to try to make them go for a four and two schedule like the police do.
Okay.
And I'm actually trying to get, if I can, if you see that number, another full-time dispatcher.
Yeah, I would just say, and I know the board of selectmen recommended it, but as we have the same discussion about adding hours to, um, in the board of selectmen's office, a lot of adding additional personnel is going to come down to what, um, our revenue sources look like as we come out of the situation that we're in, so, um, just, uh, I think we're going to relook at how many additional employees we could technically put on, because we don't want to put people on, and then six months from now, revenues have collapsed, and we have to lay people off.
Sure, I understand that.
Yeah, so.
I understand that.
Just be aware of that, so.
Okay, yep.
Any questions on communications? Nobody? Harbor master, so I know this department falls under the chief now, but I believe, is Ron still here, Ron still here?
Yes.
Hi, Ron.
How are you?
Thanks for your patience.
No problem.
This is line number?
295.
295.
There's something I have to mention on this, I'm sorry, Ron.
Go ahead.
The board of selectmen voted to grant the police chief, um, a $500 stipend for his work overseeing the harbor master, and same thing will happen in animal inspector, so I did, if, I did stick that in the budget document, but I didn't do it in the tabbed one, so Peter, if you're looking at the tabbed one, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'll fix that.
This is the, this is the one that I found earlier today, that Mallory had made a mistake on.
I messed, I, after like telling everyone, don't touch it, don't touch it. Yeah, I know, perfect.
Great, let's move on.
Just a point, a correction, Mallory, it's not the animal inspector, it's the ACO where the other 500 is.
Correct, yes, I'm sorry, yes, animal control officer.
So.
Are Stacy and Tom on the same beach?
Yes, I changed her name, so everyone can see us.
So what's that going under, the harbor master?
Yeah, yeah, it's under the budget 295, it says new line chief stipend. All right, so, so, um, I see, Ron, in your request, um, you have requested increase in stipend, and I think you heard some of our discussion about that, about increases in stipend earlier, we will take it into consideration, as we always do. Uh, but it will.
I don't think it's a lot, Ed, I mean, there's, you know, we got to bring this up once and for all, I mean, we're doing law enforcement first response work, we're out there doing the same thing that many others are doing for pennies, we got to bring this up once and for all, I mean, we just added another 500 stipend for the chief to oversee us, so we got to start bringing our stipends up and getting them consistent, at least with what's in our area, you know, which is still pennies compared to many other areas, but we got to bring those up once and for all. Right now, we just, you just told me we've got somebody else taking another $500 stipend just to watch us and look over us.
Well, let's, wait, all right, so I don't, this is not what we as a finance committee get into, but there, there is, it has to be a, um, set of order of how things report, and under, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but under MGL, harbor masters fall within the rights of policing, so whether they get a stipend or not, it's ultimately the responsibility of the police chief, um, I think.
Well, actually, under Massachusetts general law, the harbor masters fall under the selectmen, under Massachusetts general law, chapter 102, they're under the selectmen.
But where does oversight, where does oversight normally fall within most places? Is it under the police department?
Never, no, it's, it's been tried, it's been attempted on many towns, and it's been abandoned, because it didn't work. Not saying that we don't have a good working relationship, we have a fantastic working relationship between myself, my assistants, and the officers, we call, they help us out, they have an issue, they call us, we help them out. You know, we basically have our own places in the community, and we respect each other's positions, but typically, when you have more, say, Chatham, or somewhere down on the Cape, where they've attempted to bring the harbor master group under the law enforcement, now you're incorporating civilians in with the police department, and that doesn't work well, so that's been abandoned.
Okay.
I mean, we were going to do this under the police department, and if you look at the meeting minutes, it was strictly for accounting purposes, not for oversight or supervision, this was always under the selectmen, um, and then it was decided to include it under the police department budget line item for accounting purposes only, and those were my words, accounting purposes only, and I would actually call on the minutes of that meeting when this happened, to bring that back to light, that the harbor master's duties and responsibilities did not fall under the supervision of the police department, it was accounting purposes only, and now it's, it is getting the other way, and people are losing sight of that, and it's, you know, it shouldn't be that way.
Okay, all right, well, we're not going to make your determination on stipends tonight, but understanding where we, where the, um, the commitment this board has made on stipends, and we'll do some more review based on what's surrounding communities, and communities that have waterways similar to, or if there are any, similar to us, um, and then we'll take, and we'll take a look at it, but we will do the due diligence on it at your request.
Just so you, so you know, I did that last time, you basically have Somerset, Fall River, and Swansea, which are the nearest, and have the most similar, uh, waterways to compare Dyson to, um, and we would fall, we were at the bottom end, the high end was, I think, 3,500 bucks, um, so this would put us right in the average with those three communities, with what they're paying their harbor masters and their assistants.
We'll, we'll do some more due diligence on it, I, you have my commitment to that.
Okay.
Okay.
Ron, what's in the $5,000 additional equipment line?
Uh, I want to replace the trailer, because it's rotting out, it's 15 years old now, actually 14 years old now, and if I do a repair, structural repairs, new axles, new hubs, new springs, new cross members, I'm probably going to be more than the cost of half of a new trailer, and what's to say that the other half won't rot out, uh, within the next six to eight months? It's already at that point, as if you know anything about galvanized boat trailers, trailers are pretty much sacrificial, whether they're construction, highway, or a boat trailer, you take good care of them, you rinse them off, you grease them, but they invariably just deteriorate, and that's the nature of the beast. So our trailer, which came with that boat from Boston Whaler when it was manufactured, is at that point in life now where I want to replace it, the bunks have rotted off, the axles are just rusted hulks, and I do have two cross members that have a significant amount of rust and rot corrosion on the bottoms, and I'm not, I don't feel comfortable or safe towing the boat from the ramp, or from the, um, the marine mechanic, you know, back and forth on that trailer, it's an unsafe situation, and I put 5,000 in there, trailers generally run, uh, somewhere around 42 to 4300 dollars, and then if you want to do a spare tire with a spare tire carrier, that's additional, if you want to do the axle and hub auxiliary hose wash, it's usually like another 150, so I put, you know, rounded it up to 5,000, and I would be able to trade in our trailer and get some money, probably anywhere from 300 to 500 bucks.
So that being a new purchase, wouldn't we want to put that on as a special?
Um, as a special line item?
A special article, since it's an, just like we did with the boat, since it's a special. A special article, since it's an individual, just like we did with the boat, since it's a special, it's a one-time purchase.
We could, or we can even do it the way we did with the last stuff and do it out of that Waterways account. But this was my starting point. Start at this point, put it on this list.
Can, can you just explain what the, what caused the two over expenditures this year in equipment repairs and additional equipment?
Which ones would those be? Which line items?
5240 and 5850. Both have over expenditures this year.
5240 and 5250. What's 5250?
50, no, 5850.
When I had the top, that fabric top and the mast built, one of the things that I didn't plan on doing was replacing these strobe lights on the top. When we got to dissecting all the existing equipment, we were going to keep that, we found that it was full of water. So that was $1,000. And the spotlight, I wasn't planning to completely replace, and that was on, that was 900. So those were two things when they started dissecting the boat top that we figured out, hey, we're going to need to spend money on these two items. So that's why that went over.
Okay.
Is there a reason that the Harbor Master gas and diesel wouldn't be over on everybody else's energy as well?
It's a different kind of energy. I don't know, from an accounting perspective.
Go ahead, Mallory.
Sorry, it's not a, sorry, Ron, cut you off. It's not a building. So the, the main motivation to combine the energy lines was about DOER and reporting requirements for green communities. It's not an area we've specified we're going to reduce energy. So to be honest, I just didn't think of it when we were combining. If you want to change it, we can, but I didn't even think about it.
We know what we have in that Waterways Fund?
Right now, if I remember, there's about 9,000 in there. 9,000 and change. And maybe, might have even gone up since then, because we've gotten some excise tax and mooring, mooring checks in, which will cause that to go up. So Chris, Chris would know what that was better than me. It probably doesn't even know about the, the account itself, but I can give you the number.
Can I ask a voting question?
Sure.
What happens if someone doesn't pay their boat excise?
Well, that's a gray area because the state of Massachusetts doesn't have any teeth in their law for people who don't pay boating excise tax. We've been through this with the Bristol County Sheriff's Department and our tax department and Mary Hathaway. We've identified a host of boats that didn't pay. So we said, well, this is great. We'll get the sheriff with us to help us walk the docks and go collect some money, knock on doors. Unfortunately, there's no teeth in the law that really says you have to pay it. It just says you need to pay it, but it doesn't say what happens if you don't pay it.
Sorry, if I may, if I may, Ron.
Yes.
There's no provision in the law like motor vehicle excise taxes that allows us to withhold registrations or re-registrations on the boats?
No, unfortunately not. No. This has been a real sore spot, both for the, you know, for Mary Hathaway, for the Bristol County Sheriff who has to, you know, try to help these agencies out. Unfortunately, that's a gray area.
Well, I think, I'm sorry, I think it would be incumbent upon the Mass Municipal Association, the Board of Selectmen and whatnot, to petition the Commonwealth to revise the law to allow for cancellation or prohibition of renewing registrations on your boats, because like your vehicles, you have to register boats every two years if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. You shouldn't be allowed to register your boat if you've got a mooring and you're not paying the excise tax for it.
Yeah, if you don't have, if you haven't paid excise tax, you don't get a mooring in town. You have to produce proof of paid excise tax with your mooring application to get a mooring indictment. That's, that's as far as we can really take it as municipality. Your suggestion, I support it 100%. You know, there's not a ton of people that don't pay the excise tax. The majority of people do. There's a handful. You know, and if you look at the roles that say, well, all these people are, don't pay excise tax, most of those boats are gone. They've been sold and haven't been here for 10 years. But, you know, they didn't report them as sold to the environmental police. So nobody knows that they don't exist anymore, and they just keep showing up every year on the same, you know, delinquent excise tax register. So that's, that's another, you know, issue. Boating is kind of loose sometimes.
Alright, alright, well, thanks, Ron. We'll, we'll take it under advisement. We'll do our due diligence to it, and we'll, we'll make sure we get back to you before we finalize anything.
Great, thank you very much.
Alright, thanks, Ron. Be safe.
Yep.
Animal Control, and I know we're, we're running a little bit behind here, so Don and Jim Maggiar and Chris McGee, I apologize. But we're getting there.
All good.
Okay.
Eat your dinner.
Animal Control is what number?
292.
Thank you. Oh, like right above it. Stacy, any significant things you want to go over before we jump in asking questions?
Well, I know we added a phone stipend this year. That's, hasn't been ever on my budget. And a Wi-Fi hotspot for the new shelter because there's no Wi-Fi up there. And I think those were the, oh, and then we had, we have to have a contract with Angel View to dispose of roadkill. And there's a contract that there was a, that's never been in the budget before. It's $1,000, $500 per, every six months to come empty the freezer.
Other, okay, I see those. So we haven't assigned an account number to that contract disposal yet, correct?
No, we have not.
Okay. And the telephone stipend falls where?
Under.
Communications?
Communications, yes.
So where does the hotspot fall?
Is that the new line that's got the, it's under 5152 is a blank spot? I got a note here that says.
That's the communication allowance. That has no.
That's the phone.
The cell phone.
But there's no, there is no funding submitted on it.
For the departmental request, you think?
Yes.
The department request is in there, Ed, but no change from last year.
And then in Board of Selectmen recommendations, it's there.
It's in the recommendation, but not the departmental request. Okay.
You want me to add that? Do you want to change that?
Please. I would, but I don't want to be accused of screwing up any pages.
And I'm going to do this when I'm not trying to do all the other things because I don't want to mess up.
It is in the separate spreadsheet, Mallory.
In the, in the tabbed ones?
Oh, it's in the tab one? I thought it would automatically.
It does, but because it's new, and I, I know how I added it because it came in after, because it's new, the tabbed one doesn't have the formula to kick it over to the master. So that's a quick thing you can do that. I'm just going to focus when I.
Yeah, that's, that's outside my computer skills, so. You know, you know, these pivot tables and all this nonsense. It's all nonsense. These linking stuff up, that's for, that's for the different generation.
That's for the penguin.
So Mallory, on this one, would this got to be $500 added in, right?
Now, seven, isn't it, is it 720?
No, no, I'm talking about the chief stipend.
So, Selectmen, I have that on this budget document. That's electronic. I have it in there, new line chief stipend under personnel up there.
What's the line number?
I don't have one. Chris hasn't given me one yet.
So is it, is it under Assistant ACO?
It's right below 5106.
That's what I was wondering. And it just says, what, police chief stipend?
Yeah, it says new line chief stipend.
Okay.
Any questions on animal control?
The shelter's working out great, and Stacy has.
I run by, I run by it almost every day.
Stacy has had lots of visitors lately, and the Selectmen don't know it yet, but they'll soon be looking at a schedule of fees for adopting out animals.
I, I thought you were going to say that the, the Town Hall has adopted a dog daily use.
I wish.
No, we would have something more fun, like a pig or like, you know, some exotic animal.
Stacy, how are the donations going?
Very well. I've got a lot of donations for food, for dogs and cats, if anybody knows of anybody. So, very well.
Very nice. And has everyone seen the van? The new digs? It's nice.
Oh, I should.
The ACO van.
I know that we're behind on time. I just want to make this point to the finance committee. So we are going to go to town meeting and reappropriate funds from a previous warrant article because as you may recall, that warrant article specified that we would letter a 2014 or some such Ford Explorer, which of course did not end up working out for a variety of reasons. So now Stacy has a 2018 Nissan, Nissan cargo van. And we just, because we were specific of the type of vehicle, we have to go back and change that. So that'll be on the warrant, but same money.
I think you drove by me when I was running yesterday.
Probably.
I didn't recognize the vehicle.
There is also, we also upped the part time or the, whatever, Assistant ACO budget. And it was, it went up, it was supposed to go up to like 2,100. I'm okay with cutting that because I've made a deal with Rehoboth that he's willing to come in when I am on vacation and cover Rehoboth for me, and I would do the same for him if his assistant can't.
Stacy, a question under this, you know, I've seen this on television every night. Have we experienced people giving up their animals because they can't take care of them because of the pandemic?
Not as of yet, and that's why I wanted to have the donations for food. And I even have put it out there, if people have horses, cows, I'll make some kind of deal with Bay State so they can have something, so they don't have to give up their animals.
Okay, thank you.
That's good.
Good, thank you, Stace. Any questions on animal control? Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Now we're up to the fire, Chief. Only 45 minutes behind, Chief. Help pick up, help us pick up some time here.
It's all good.
Alright.
It's funny, in case you need it. Should be frozen.
No, I'm here.
Okay.
I make myself look frozen, so you guys think I am. I stop blinking. Chief, any highlights?
I, I don't, I don't think so. Unless you have questions.
Just vehicle supplies?
Vehicle supplies. So, uh, let's see.
Pete, is that 5480?
Uh, yes.
I think the question might be, you're over expended this year. Is there anything necessary to, the reason why it's, the request is level funded when you overspend and you still have three months left?
Because I, I, I did hose testing this year, which I'm actually, we, we fell behind on because of past situations. And I lost a ton of fire hose, so I had to replace it. So that was, that was the big expense this year is, is replacement of fire hose.
Okay, so we won't have that next year?
No, and, and even if I need to replace more, it'll be done at more of a slower pace. The one that hurt the most was I lost a whole thousand-foot bed of four-inch off of engine three. And that is a significant cost as you can imagine for a four-inch supply line.
And then how about the building repairs and maintenance line?
So the building repairs and maintenance, I did some, I did, I did some access control stuff to both stations to make it more secure. And what I was experiencing, or what was experienced in the past was when people left, we had no way of making sure they had no access to the station. And I just, I did some upgrades for that. So that was a one-time cost.
Okay. Then, so on the, on the bigger question before we go down and talk about the ambulance is I know we had some preliminary discussions about a new truck. Is there, is there a special article for that?
There is.
Okay. We'll get into that, because I just wanted to find out if, if that was still in the proposals. So Chief, do you want to fill the rest of the committee in on the opportunity you have for a new vehicle? And the deal is, it's a pretty good deal.
Yeah, so this year, when we did the aerial ladder test on the ladder truck that we currently own, it was noted that there was severe rung wear on two spots on the three flies of the 100-foot stick. So in that test, there was also a pump test done, and there was some, the pump failed, basically. So when I sent it for repair, it was minor repairs. It was like gaskets and things like that. I sent it for repair, and when I sent it for repair, I asked the repair company to take a look at this aerial ladder, to look at the rungs, and give me a quote or an idea of the repairs to the, to the truck. And basically, the gentleman at the repair place who does the, the pricing said that to fix your, your situation is not, the truck's not worth it. You're going to have to cut every rung out and weld in a new one. It just, it, it doesn't make sense, Chief. So they happened to just have taken in a aerial ladder from the town of Sudbury in trade. And he took me out to take a look at it. The truck is in beautiful shape. It's 1999 E1. He actually brought it to the town. We had it at the station. He brought us a ticket around town and tried it out in spots to make sure it would, it worked for us and fit for us. And he's, he's willing to sell it to the town for, I think it was 50,000. Make sure that's correct. He's willing to sell it to the town for $50,000. That would include the aerial ladder test. So I put in an article for 60 because what I will have to do before we get it is do the pump test and then letter it and, and a couple of the minor things. My thought is, is, you know, I know that there was always a discussion of buying a brand-new one. I don't feel that at this time that that's something that the town can do. I think that this will buy us, let's say, 10 to 15 years for the town to put together, and come to put together a better plan to replace a truck that's going to be one, 1.25 million dollars down the road if we, if we look at something brand-new. So I, I just think that with the wear, and it just makes more sense. And this is an opportunity that I, I don't feel like the town can pass up. So that's, that's where I stand with that. If there's any questions, I can answer them.
I'm going to turn it to the Capital Outlay Committee Chairman.
50,000 will get us 10, 15 years, Chris?
Yes.
And Robert, you, the Capital Outlay, you, this was one of the, the list, right?
Yeah, I can't recall exactly what, what was on the list off the top of my head, but the ladder truck was, was most definitely on the list. And I think, I, I think the number that we had been marching towards was somewhere between 850,000 to a million.
Yes, yes. And, and you know, as, as you all know, as the years go on, the price of materials and everything has gone up. So, you know, that, that number has inflated since the time when that was provided.
Yeah. So do we run any risk of losing the, is it on this opportunity?
Yeah, if this doesn't get approved, if this doesn't get approved, then he'll essentially sell the truck. Right now, he's holding, right now, he's holding it for the town of Dayton.
Say, say the town meeting gets pushed back, what does that do to?
He's, he's, he's willing to hold the truck for us for, until we have a result of a town meeting.
I mean, it's a no-brainer for me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chief, so thank you for doing that legwork on finding that.
And it reaches, it reaches the top that it needs to, right? I know there was some concern that it was a little bit shorter, but it does everything we need it to.
It does. That's why he was willing to let us take it here in town and, and drive it around and try it in all the different situations that we could imagine we could put it into.
Thank you.
What is our highest pointed building in town?
The power plant stack. So even, even with, even with this truck or with the truck we currently own, we can't reach the platform on the stack. It's still a technical rescue, and it's gonna require other means. But this can get us to a point where a technical rescue team can get them to a safe point where we can now extricate from that, that area.
Alright, thanks, chief.
No problem. I also have the electric vehicle, article two. I don't know if you want to discuss, need to discuss that or not.
You have articles for review later?
Yeah, I, I think we're in a week or so away because I think we want to gather all the articles and do those all in one night, chief. But I just felt that the vehicle is something that we should have in our heads early on, so.
Sure.
Any questions on the fire? We'll, we'll get to ambulance next, but on the fire budget?
Nope.
Ambulance. The, the normal question on ambulances, how are our collections this year? What's the outlook in, in, in the ambulance budget?
So, um, we are collecting at a better rate than we were in the past. We did approximately 50 less runs this year, and we brought in more than we have in the past. And I, I don't remember exactly what the numbers were, but we've, we've taken in more than what we did the year before. And, and like I say, technically, our run numbers are down, and our run numbers are down only because the town of Somerset put rescue, their rescue two at the service with a full-time staff, so our mutual aid numbers went down to the town of Somerset.
Chief, are you saying that even with the runs down, the collections are still up over when we had the third-party vendors?
Correct.
Nice. Good work.
Hey Brett, that's a no-brainer.
So, it's just, it worked out exactly, you know, things in government don't always work out exactly how you think they should or, and it did, so I just, it's awesome. It's good news.
So, so Chris and Chris, when we get to the point where we start our final recommendations of the budget, we're gonna need what the current balance of the ambulance fund is so we can make the determination of what we want to leave and what we want to, because we've, we've tried to do a pretty good job of, of balance, doing a balancing act, so we never totally drain it. But we use what's necessary to fund as much of the ambulance portion of the budget as we can.
Absolutely. And, and I, I can't take all, I obviously cannot take all the credit for the ambulance collections. Rebecca, who we, we hired is, has worked amazingly, and she's very diligent in what she does. And, and she's really been a godsend for myself and helping and doing what she does.
Well, let her know, we think, we, you know, said she's doing an excellent job, so we appreciate it.
Will do.
And besides that, Chris, besides that, we didn't have to beat you over the head to convince you to do it. Brett and I had enough of the other system, so thank you very much.
No problem.
So, anything, anything special you want to call out on the ambulance side of the budget, Chris?
I, I don't think so. Unless you have questions, I think it's pretty straightforward. I don't think there's anything significant to it.
The only question I've got on 5850, the fire rescue equipment, are you, are you, you'd spent 2,300 through the March date, are you in the rest of that?
So, there's a spending freeze right now, but yes, I, I, yes, definitely.
Okay. So that's, that's something that normally comes in the spring?
Yeah, because I start doing my, there's a lot of testing and stuff that's coming up and all that stuff. And then replacement of, you know, obviously, I, I still have some more fire hose that I want to replace and stuff like that. So that stuff would start coming out of that.
Would fire hose come out of the ambulance side or that would be in the fire?
Um, it, it, it comes out of both.
Okay.
Any other questions on ambulance? Thank you, chief.
No problem. Thank you.
And do me a favor, thank, thank you guys for all that they're doing during, during this time. I can ima, I can imagine that some of the ambulance runs are not very fun.
No, they're not. And if I said to you, my anxiety level doesn't go through the roof every time I hear the ambulance open the door, I'd be lying there.
Yeah.
Because right now, you know, I'm, I'm concerned not only about the people we're transporting, but my personnel.
Yeah.
And, you know, them getting something and possibly bringing it back to their families. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a tough time right now. And, and all in all, the morale in the department's good. Everybody's coming to work and enjoying their jobs.
Yeah, please send, please send our thoughts to them and thank them for what they're doing.
Will do.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Hey, we picked up 15 minutes. Good job, chief.
Glad I could help.
Mr. Hershey, welcome to the finance committee meeting.
Glad to be here.
Hi, Mr. Hershey.
Good evening. How's everyone?
I'm doing.
All right, see, what number are we at?
I-43.
That's a long way down the page. Don, is there anything you want to call out before we may ask some questions?
I'm at a little disadvantage because I don't have all the paperwork with me at home. So I'm going by memory on some of this stuff, but I was gonna try to double fund the budget from last year. The only differences would be Nancy Pinto's overtime, sickly bonus, and the clothing allowance.
Don, I'm gonna put it up on the screen so that it will help you.
Okay.
Okay, this is the column for your department request.
All right, yeah, so I, I have a question on that. Well, so I see on the department requests versus the board of selectmen recommendations on the salary lines that.
It goes up.
One is slightly higher and one is slightly lower.
So, Mr. Hershey's salary from FY20, as it was figured out, had left off the two days, the Monday and the Tuesday that this fiscal year provides. So this recommended figure for FY21 corrects that and provides a 2% increase.
So the FY21 department request is correct or the board of selectmen's recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommendation.
Okay, and how about on 5115, which was a department request of 1908 with a board of selectmen recommendation of 1904?
The 1904 is, I'm just gonna scroll over, I'm sorry, is a level funded from FY20 because the clerical contract has not been established yet.
Okay, okay. And then, oh, so I, I'm assuming that in the FY20 budget, the vacation sick time buyback was because we had thought the employee was going to retire?
No.
In the FY20 budget?
In the FY20 budget, there is, on fifth line, 5155, there's 1,04984 that is not in the FY21 request.
I'm not sure why that's there, and it's not been expended.
No, it's not been expended, so I don't know why. So it's coming out in this year's. I was just wondering if there was a reason why it was in last year's.
The, the sickly.
This one right here, Tom.
The sickly bonus, I believe, is $300 and a split between the building department.
But this is the line above it. It would be only if someone was retiring.
Well, she's not ready, she's not ready to retire.
So, but last year must have been budgeted because someone thought someone was retiring, right? I don't know, I'm just asking. Okay, it's not in this year's budget. I just don't, it had to have been a reason it was in last year's budget, so. Okay. That's, that's all I have for questions. Anybody else on veterans?
One, from last year, we bumped up the benefits line. And I know that the, this quarter isn't gonna be a good indication of what you, what you need for it, but should it go back to more of what, what we had it at before at about 70, or is 80 still a good number?
Well, 80 is a, is a safe number, I'll put it that way. It, things are changing because there's all the new building in town. There are people moving in. So as my older generation through attrition drops off, we have other people coming in. So it's an unknown, but it doesn't matter. I mean, the money doesn't go anywhere. If I don't use it, it just gets rolled over.
Did you say that's a state number?
A what?
Did you say the state?
No, S A F B.
State, okay.
I mean, we can, you could lower that number, but in a worst-case scenario, a lot more benefits are paid out than that. We're gonna have to provide that money somehow.
Which I think we've done in the past. I think we've, we, we have, we have upped it in certain years where it.
It has been, it has been up and down, but we've never really been in danger of using it.
Okay, okay. We'll keep an eye on it as we get closer to the end of the, the end of this fiscal year. If it, if it comes in significantly lower than, you know, it's like, it's that roll the dice we could take. We could take it down to 65 and then next year it's 75 and we'll keep an eye on it.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions on veterans? Okay, thanks, Don. Much appreciated.
Okay, sir. Thank you very much.
John, happy birthday.
Thank you, Ellery. Thank you, Brett.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, Don.
We're gonna be shooting for nine o'clock. Jim Aguirre, are you there in person?
Still muted.
Jim?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here.
You don't want us to see your smiling face?
Hey, Jim.
Well, hi, everyone. Let's just say that I'm very disappointed because I look forward to my time with the finance committee every year. And here we are, voices only, so we'll get through it, right?
Well, I know, we can all see each other.
I'm, I'm driving. I'm a multi-chuckin'. You should know I'm a multi-chuckin'. I got things going on.
Well played, Jim. That's good.
Tree right now, Mr. Aguirre, correct?
All right, let's start with the building department budget, which is.
242.
No, it's 241.
241, I'm sorry.
41.
Gas inspections on this list, though.
All right, so Jim, is there anything before we start asking our questions you'd like to open up with? I know that's an open-ended question with you, but I'll give you, I'll give you, I'll give you the floor.
Well, I'm gonna shed light on a previous topic that came up with Don because you'll see it in my budget as well. My Nancy Pinto, who works tirelessly, has a significant amount of comp time on the books. Nancy wanted to try to get some of that bought back this year. That did not happen. That's why Don and I both have that number still pending in our budgets. I am against comp time. I think it's an unfunded liability. The only reason she's been able to accumulate so much is that a previous select board had eliminated overtime. When you're doing what we're doing in my department and Don's with one person, it's impossible to completely negate overtime and/or comp time. So what I've done is I've created a departmental procedure or policy, rather, that eliminates comp time. She can no longer accrue comp time, which is why I now have an overtime line in my budget. We only need overtime when one of us is on vacation. That's the only time that she's taxed and she needs to put in extra hours just to make sure she stays afloat. So it's not something that's gonna be abused or a way to bolster her salary. The track record shows that we need it.
Jim, do we lose you?
I'm here. I'm here.
Okay. You cut out for a second.
So, oh, sorry. Did you, did you get the overtime, comp time discussion?
Yes, except for just like the last 10 seconds.
Okay, all right. No, that, that's all. So I have been working to try to move towards a solid number. I know how much overtime she needs to get through the vacation times, so that's why you're seeing those two lines. Also, you'll see that her sick buyback and comp buyback is zeroed out for this year. She's not eligible for sick, and there isn't gonna be any comp time. I'm having her use it slowly as she can, and she's agreed to use it over the next few years until she retires to get it off the books. That said, I'll give you my quick opine on the additional carryover of vacation time because of the pandemic. My office would fall into severe hardship because I already have a situation where she carries vacation time two weeks maximum every year. So by having her with additional time off, that would just create a further hardship in my department. So I'm all for either using it or, or paying the employee for it if the money's available.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
So, so Jim, I have, I have a question on that whole overtime, additional hours. So in FY18 and FY19, we did fund portions of that line. Why, can you tell us?
That was for me.
That was for you?
For me.
Okay.
That was for me, right.
Okay.
And we eliminated that last year when we did the job description change. I no longer accrue comp time or overtime.
So I have a question to the board of selectmen and Mallory. Do we have a lot of comp time still going on in town? I thought we eliminated all of that.
We didn't eliminate comp time, and we have some managers, some department heads who manage it better than others. The contract and the clerical union contract specifies that it has to have department head approval. And I think that is sometimes lost on the department heads, that it's not by right that they, you know, you, you, you as a department head have control over that. So I, I tend to agree with Jim, and I have to applaud him because I think he manages this aspect very well. The vacation, I just want to hit on this. I'm sorry. It's why I'm, I just want you to know that the employees are entitled to carry up over two weeks, so that has to be a consideration in our conversation. Otherwise, we'd be in breach of contract if we, if we just paid everything out. So we have to consider two weeks. But he, he has a point there that it becomes a liability, even just in the two weeks, and it's something I'm looking at in the contract.
Thank you.
And then I see that there's a difference between your salary request and the board of selectmen's recommendation.
Right. So that was because I included a 1% incentive based on job performance. Right. So that was because I included a one percent incentive based on job performance. But the selectmen have since voted and set a policy, so I'm sure their number is reduced by about one percent.
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have it exactly. I know that.
Their vote was a two percent increase.
Three and a half percent.
Yeah, but they, you got the two days in there too, Ed. You have to figure.
Oh, okay.
Chris Levy-Lett actually went like really in-depth on payroll and or um pay rates and did it by by calculation through actual uh weeks for FY twenty-one. So we're pretty confident in these numbers.
Okay. Any questions on the building department? Okay.
No, I just want to ask Jim, are, sir, are you driving hands-free now?
Absolutely.
Are you driving to Maine because things are open there?
Anything on?
I'm sorry, Mallory.
I just asked if you were driving to Maine because things are open. Don't worry about it. It's just a stupid.
No, actually, actually, I went truck shopping, believe it or not. I went and looked at a truck.
Nice.
Get it for a steal these days.
Yeah.
Eight, eight, probably eighty-four months, zero percent, and they'll drive you up. You don't have to pay anything for three months.
Yeah, tomorrow's May first. I'm waiting for them to get really aggressive, so I want to make sure I like it before I call tomorrow.
Any questions on gas inspection, plumbing inspection, weights and measures, electrical inspection, wiring inspector?
Uh, all that is level funded. And just before you ask, if you see that the percentages on the remaining funds uh seem that we're gonna have excess in those accounts, we've started um three large projects recently. So they are gonna have an escalation in inspections from now until the end of the year.
But we will also take into account as we look that um I would have to believe we're gonna see a slowdown in some things over the next uh twelve to eighteen months, so.
Well, I'll give you a little precursor, and I know it's late. Uh, since we closed Town Hall, I've taken in um, Ed processed seventy permits. That's seven zero. And my revenues with this month's turn-in, uh, this week's turn-in, I'm sorry, are probably gonna be the second highest revenues I've had since I've been here for ten years. So I'm not seeing it. What happens in the next six to twelve months is remains to be seen. But I'll tell you, Ed, I'm not seeing it.
Uh, 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 but what percentage of those are renovation projects that that people who are now at home are taking on themselves versus um true construction projects?
Yep. So I have seen a slight uptick in remodeling, so you are correct. Um, and I'm grateful for the people at home who still want to get their permits, even though they know we closed, we're closed. So I'm I'm grateful of that. Um, but no, I've actually processed uh quite a few uh commercial and residential new construction permits just in the last thirty days.
Okay. Alright.
All without an office manager.
Appreciate that. So, alright, is there any uh, any other questions for Jim?
Hey, Jim, I have one question, not related to those permits. But um I saw a listing of revenues that Chris uh had prepared, and I would think it was twenty-eight or twenty-nine thousand for stormwater permits. Is that the Aggie school and the solar farm, or is it just one project?
That's a culmination of uh all of you said, solar and the Aggie, correct.
Okay, alright, I, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, thanks, Jim. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you all.
Drive safe.
Yep, everyone be safe. Thank you.
See you, Jim. Good night.
Good night.
Alright, so so that wraps up our first night, which is usually our third night when we have all of the big budgets come in. But um we took care of them early this time. I appreciate everybody's long patience tonight going through it. Because this is, this is prob, this will probably be the the longest night. Um, I think when we get other than the schools next week. For the most part, this will, we we got through the the largest portions of our budgets. I think what we'll do before um uh, right at the beginning of Tuesday night's discussion is we'll talk about revenues a little bit. Review that front-page sheet before we get into the schools. But I'll just give you a little preview on the school one. The, I sat through the school committee meeting the other night, and they sent over, I think Mallory forwarded it out today, budget sheets. So that number that we've gotten from the school versus not what we ended up paying last year from what we had approved at town meeting last year, which was built into the budget and will come back to us in some free cash, is about a two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-dollar increase. So it's technically about a four-hundred-thousand-dollar increase, but versus what we had originally approved last year, it's about a two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-dollar increase. So just know that um going in. So we'll see where the numbers shake out when when Chris plugs in those numbers into the um uh, the page and we look at them at the beginning of the next meeting. But uh, uh, we'll um, we'll talk more about that on Tuesday. Does anybody have anything they want to add? Oh, everybody's awful quiet. I had to call Robert Rendon out on the Capitol Outlet just to make sure he was still alive and he didn't put a picture on the screen.
The cardboard cutout wouldn't cut it.
Oh, but thanks, guys. Much appreciated. We'll talk to everybody on uh Tuesday.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, Don. I see you down there.
Yeah, good, good. Oh, yes.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Wait, did Ed leave us?
Uh, he did, yeah.
You guys just have to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Second. Second. Got it.
I'm in favor.
Alright, we're good to go.
I think most of your grandma. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye.